Okay, it's always a pleasure for me to knock this and see Commissioner Weaver's faces I'm knocking. It is February seventeenth, Thursday, welcome for open session. It looks like a relatively light open session, which is not a bad thing because we have some activities happening later on this afternoon. But before we start, as always, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance and give ourselves a moment of silence and reflect.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I think we have some standard processes that we have in place. We're going to go through priority Carroll, have an update from our wonderful Mr. Fowler, and then get an update on COVID from Ms. Sue Doyle. But before those updates, let's go through priority Carroll. Commissioner Frazier, what's on your mind?
We don't want to go into all that, but say we had the legislative committee meeting the other day. I have to say that they're getting shorter and almost, it's almost down to two hours now, which was good. We do have a lot of things to go over. There's a lot of discussion, really good discussion on the bills and so forth, so it's a really good committee to be on. Also want to say, as everyone knows, COVID numbers are going down. Thank you, thank you. It's not over yet, but it seems that we're heading in the right direction. I'm hoping with spring, everybody outside, the numbers will dip dramatically even more, but that's just the hope I have. That's all I have, thanks.
Something about hope, isn't there, that we've heard before?
That's right.
There is no hope, but the course of action is being vaccinated and doing the right things.
I have to say, I was at a meeting, I don't know what meeting I was at, and the guy talked about hope and he said, "Hope is not a course of action." I said, "Wait, who is that?"
He's listening to Commissioner Ralston.
It is the truth. Okay, Commissioner Wance.
I'm telling you, that's not what Eisenhower said.
It is what Eisenhower said, absolutely.
That's not what he said. Anyway.
Go ahead.
Good morning. Tell, well, first of all, let me start off, I always like to honor those that are no longer with us. Neglected last week to, and I'm not sure when he did pass away, but Richard Dick Lindsay was a longtime county employee here. And he did, Dick did a lot of design work, and I was reminded last night at one of the meetings, I lost count of how many I was at last night. Whoever said this was just a thirty hour job of shaking hands and kissing babies should have had their head examined. Anyway, Dick was primarily responsible for the construction and the design of Carroll Community College. And did a lot of work here in the county with Carroll County Government. So Dick just passed away. He was actually close to, in our district, he was in, lived on Bonkman's Valley Road. Very nice gentleman. I had the opportunity to work with him a little bit here in another life when I was hanging around the halls here. And we want to wish our deepest sympathies and condolences to his family. Today is also the line of duty funeral for Wayne Fisher, who I mentioned last week, in Harford County. I reached out to them, had a long discussion with County Executive Glassman, and that's happening at ten AM today. So we want to wish the family the best there as they go through that as well. Now, on to other things. Mako, yeah, it's getting interesting. Mike will have the bill count, that's always fun to hear. We did, we had a fairly long rural county call on Tuesday evening, and then followed that up Wednesday with a shortened version, but still lengthy. So Michael will touch on that. So then from there, I went to Carroll Community College meeting, and as most of you know, the budget season is rapidly approaching. So got a lot of numbers to share and that kind of thing that certainly we're all going to be privy to, but I, I got the precursor, if you will. And then I left there and went to ESAC and heard about the things that we need to start to look at when it comes to our fire EMS department. And then I took a nap and came in here this morning. So it's been, it's been a long few days. I will give out the commercial again. If you're looking for work, we have, what, seventy at least positions open in county government. You know, good pay, good benefits, so we're always looking for people to come here. And a reminder that the State of the County address is Tuesday at the Arts Center, and I'm going to leave it at that and go from there. So I'll nod off while Weaver's talking.
Your beauty sleep did you good.
See, I'm nodding, see, I'm nodding.
Commissioner Weaver.
Okay, I just want to say, if you really want to get some knowledge here, show up Monday night at six thirty at North Carroll High School in the auditorium. I'm having my community outreach and town hall meeting, meeting the new owners of the facility. People in the community will be able to, we're going to give them a briefing, ask questions, question and answer period, to find out exactly what's going on. Want to dispel all rumors going around, it's not a free range prison or a chicken farm or anything else happening, so they can explain exactly what's going on. And as Commissioner Wance said, Tuesday, some enjoyment in the morning for State of the County. It's always an interesting event. And then I guess next week, we have our joint meeting with the Board of Ed, and I've been attending the Board of Ed meetings. And this is a joint meeting here now, I believe, correct? We changed it. And we will be discussing, as I think most discussions in the future here, as Commissioner Wance alluded to, will be about money and budget. It seems to be a hot topic this time of year, and everybody needs money, and we don't have it. But aside from that.
That's a great starting point. We don't have it.
It's going to be interesting.
Like you have your kids.
Put it out that way and let it go, and Mr. Wance still awake?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good. We don't, we don't want that headline in the paper.
That woke me up, so.
Commissioner Boucher.
Well, I was really looking forward to the free range chicken farm. What happened with that? A lot of chickens. Mr. Swam, do you have anything for me to bring up for the people out there watching? Well, I'm waiting for something to come up. I want to read off, we have here, to BGE Energizing Small Business Grants. BGE is pledging fifteen million to assist Maryland small businesses with COVID-19 relief and recovery funds. Eligible businesses located in BGE's service area can apply for a twenty thousand dollar Energizing Small Business Grant. This grant program is part of BG's Comprehensive Customer Relief and Energy Infrastructure Investment Plan designed to help the state's economy recover from COVID. Eligible requirements, you must be for-profit business founded in two thousand twenty or prior, between one and twenty-five employees, less than seven million annual revenue, demonstrate a need for support, a strong plan for moving forward. Be in good standing with the state of Maryland. If you want any more information, you go to bg.helloalice.com. So if you're a small business out there looking for some relief, you can get there and apply for it. Here we go. We have Justin McGowan, our Facilities Maintenance Bureau Chief. He is there standing at the boiler in the Mount Airy Senior Center. We're scheduled to replace that. There is so much mechanical stuff out there in the buildings that needs regular revolving maintenance, and he gave me a tour of the facility. They do a wonderful job, and it's so important to be in front of this stuff on maintenance, because if we don't, it winds us, costs us a lot more money in. So thank you, Mr. McGowan. And look at these two lovely ladies, Angie Walsh, and the manager, and the assistant manager there. I forgot her name, it's too small, my eyes are going, but these are the two ladies that helped run the senior center in Mount Airy. They gave me a tour of the facility. They're such wonderful people over there. They're so excited about the, more and more people are starting to come out and utilize senior centers as the numbers, as Commissioner Frazier mentioned, are coming down. And they're very, very excited, and what a pleasure to have ladies like this serving our community. So thank you, ladies, for all you do. Also want to talk, oh, here we, I was out, after last week's session, I went down to Gill's Falls Park to go for a walk to relieve the stress, because it can be quite stressful in this job. And I ran into these four gentlemen that work for facilities. They were out trimming the trees back. They have to do all the grass cutting. And this time of year, they take the time to trim back the trees. They do annual revolving maintenance on our park. And that's Nathan, Lawrence, Tony, and Dawson. What a wonderful bunch. They enjoy working for the county. I always like to take the time to talk to these individuals and give them some recognition. So thank you, gentlemen. And this is the South Carroll Wrestling Team. They are champions. I'm not a wrestler. We have two wrestlers that serve on the board, and I'm sure to be very proud of them. On Saturday, the South Carroll Cavalier Wrestling Program represented the 1A North Region in a state dual championship at North Point High School. First up was the semifinals versus Harford Tech. The team took care of business with a score of forty-eight to twenty-four. To earn a spot in the final duel against a very talented North Garrett team. Once again, the team came out on top with a final score of forty-five to twenty-five to earn South Carroll their first ever state wrestling dual championship. Go Cavaliers! We have a lot to be proud of, and I'm hoping in the future we will work out something to bring these young athletes in with their coach and give them a little bit of recognition. So thank you very much. We're very proud of being representing South Carroll in the championships.
You know, they were in the finals one other time. Who coached the team back then? Just a quick question for you.
Seriously? Keep going.
All right, go ahead. There we go. And I went out to Union Bridge. You had me thrown there for a minute. I actually didn't hear a word you said, so I'm a little bit lost in that. I went out to Union Bridge with Ed Singer, who works in our Resource Management Department, to be briefed on a stormwater management system that will be installed on the west side of Union Bridge to catch the runoff of the town before it goes into the Little Pipe Creek. Got to see the layout. Here's a little bit of information on it. It shows the main street, and this is the location that shows all the world be running off. This is all part of our program to ensure, this will be the location, there's Locust Street. That area will be where the stormwater management site is, and it will actually be on the opposite side of the creek from where they're going to have our kayak launch site. While I was in Union Bridge, I had to stop in to say hi to Mayor Perry and Bill Kramer. Both these gentlemen, I took this photo and give them credit because Perry has served with the Fire Department as a volunteer for over fifty years, and so has Bill. Commissioner Wance is very familiar with these two gentlemen, all the years of service they provided, so I wanted to give them a little bit of recognition. We have such special people in all these small rural communities protecting us at a moment's notice. They jump up and go save people's lives. So thank goodness we have individuals like this throughout the county. So thank you very much.
Okay. Couple of things, I attended last week the kickoff for the Carroll Biz Challenge. Chamber of Commerce does a fantastic job in partnership with the Community College, along with businesses within Carroll County, to incentivize those entrepreneurs and, you know, small businesses to come forward. Creating their business plan and creating opportunities for them to be recognized in Carroll County. Of course, there's prize money that is associated with the winners of the Biz Challenge, and it's increasing over time. Also, the recognition goes a long ways, as even if they don't win the Biz Challenge, they are recognized and, in most typical fashion, are the small businesses that we see. And, you know, participate on the main streets in Carroll County. So good opportunity for me to participate in that. As mentioned, we do have the State of the County address, where all five colleagues, or all five of us will be participating in sharing our thoughts and views on how the State of the County is, is doing and our future. There are some housekeeping rules for entering the Arts Center. One was dealing with vaccine cards. That's no longer an issue as they've released that, and that's not part of the requirements. However, there are requirements and masks and arenas need to be worn when not eating and drinking inside the Community Arts Center. So that is, you know, as of right now, and we'll see if that changes, but masks are to be worn by everyone. I would expect either the Arts Center and/or the Chamber of Commerce to provide masks at the door if you do not have one. But look forward to seeing as many as, as possible in the Arts Center, and look forward to hearing from my colleagues as well. On the twenty-third, we have a joint Board of Ed meeting in that afternoon. We have a pretty good agenda where, like it was mentioned, the budget is on a lot of people's minds, so I expect that to be discussed during the Joint Board of Ed. I know redistricting is also on people's minds as far as the schools, especially down in the southern part of the county. As they're starting to see the challenges of, of the populations down there. The last thing before we get started, and I don't typically do this, but in national news, we see a lot of activity happening, and international news with what's going on in, in Europe and the Ukraine and Russia. And the reason I'm bringing this up is, we have, I think, eight thousand troops that have moved from the United States to Europe. So just keep them in your thoughts. And, you know, not intending that they go into combat, but just being away and deployed and away from family is a strain on, on them, along with their families, neighbors, and friends. So, you know, sometimes when we think it have, we have it tough, you know, think about those that are being separated from their loved ones, you know, in these challenging times. But I just wanted to throw that out there, as it seems to always be on my mind. Okay, without further ado, let's get right into it with Mr. Fowler. Mike, why don't you come up to the table and share with us what's happening in Annapolis?
Good morning, and I understand brevity is the point of the day, so I will take that to heart.
Where'd you get that from?
So we're approaching twenty-four hundred bills, so that's quite a lot now the past, probably seven to ten days, the, the dates for submitting bills have come and gone. So anything that's submitted now has to go to the Rules Committee, and anything after March seventh has to have the rule suspended. So hopefully, we're coming down toward, toward the end of that. Redistricting has taken a turn. You probably know that the filing, candidate filing deadline has been extended. There's a, there's a good summation in today's Baltimore Sun about the challenges to the maps. Judge Bataglia, retired Judge Bataglia, I think has to, has said she's going to determine by Tuesday whether these suits will go forward. So that'll be through the next date to look at. Going over to, or moving over to our, our legislation, our Mako initiatives, really nothing changes there. With the exception of the Governor's Highway User Revenue Bill is, is likely to fail and be replaced by the bill that Mako really has proposed, which is actually more beneficial for the counties. So there's another bill, a bill that's come forward that, that you all discussed yesterday in, in the Legislative Committee regarding property taxes for community solar generating sites. And the term agrivoltaics. So agrivoltaics is defined as land that is able to be used simultaneously for solar generation and agriculture. So this would exempt from county personal property tax, community solar equipment. And the way the bill's written, there's anything installed prior to two thousand twenty-six and then anything thereafter, so essentially everything. If they're installed on, on land that's considered agrivoltaic, brownfields, rooftops, landfill, and clean field, that's a lot of areas. It also accesses that agrivoltaic land as active agricultural land. It also mandates a fifty percent local property tax credit for any of that sighting. And that would go for the entire life cycle of the installation. So Mako is going to seek to make this, this tax aspect authorizing. But I know that the Mako Policy Analyst has a lot of deep concerns about this bill, and, and a lot of it goes to just the proliferation of solar bills in general. And combine that with climate bills, and so there doesn't seem to be, at this point, a real focused effort around solar. You'll see a little bit later, I think, a bill that, that tries to deal with that. Another bill you saw yesterday, House Bill nine seventy-nine, the homeowner protection program. So there is a homeowner protection program that people can opt into where the state will pay the tax lien and then deal with that homeowner. And so that satisfies the county tax lien. This bill would, would move from an opt-in arrangement to an automatic enrollment by anyone. So that's a benefit to the counties. They, they get that lien satisfied. Also, another bill, property tax bill, elderly individuals and veterans tax credit. So current law, locals can credit up to twenty percent with a duration of five years for that credit. This bill would authorize local governments to determine the amount and the duration, so more flexibility for locals, and that got, is getting support. I, I mentioned in previous sessions, House Bill five ninety-six, the constitutional amendment for environmental rights. That has been trimmed back a little bit. The explicit right to, to sue has been removed from that. But I would suggest there is probably an implicit right to sue, so that, that bill is still problematic. It's really a referendum bill, so if the bill passes, it goes to referendum in the, in the next election. And it has had, now had its hearing in the Senate Committee Schedule. I've left the, the climate bills that we talked a little bit about last week on here just to keep them front of mind. Again, in today's Baltimore Sun, I think there's a good summation of the Senate hearing. The folks that, I think you can, you can pretty much guess how things lined up. The environmental advocates, obviously, were, were in favor of the bill. But a number of groups came forward, commercial real estate, obviously the utilities have some issues, some private companies that provide heating oil and propane for areas on the eastern shore and in western Maryland. So this is, I, I did hear the, the Senator, the Chair and the sponsor say that this is sort of the extent to which he'd like to go, but it sounds like he will be open to, to some negotiation, so that's, that's a good thing. Cybersecurity was another issue we talked about extensively yesterday. There are four bills that were put forward by Senator Hester and Delegate Pat Young from Baltimore County. I, I got a call from, from Mark Ripper, our IT Director, who leads the IT affiliate for Mako, and they had met over the summer to discuss a lot of these issues. And they walked away from the table with an understanding that a lot of mandates would not be forthcoming, that counties would be given a lot of flexibility. For example, in training, developing training programs for employees and implementing those plans. And he was a little concerned that none of those things were contained in the bill. They still contained all the mandates. But what we understand is, there was some miscommunication from Senator Hester's office and the bill drafting folks in DLS. So she is going to work with the stakeholders to heavily amend these bills. It may wind up ultimately in one or two bills. So I think that's, that's, should put some of those concerns to rest. We've talked about the Kerwin-related Accountability and Implementation Board. They are seated now, but this bill would change the composition of the board to give some more geographic representation. Right now, eastern shore, southern Maryland, western Maryland is not represented on that board, and there are some concerns in those areas that are unique and, and probably shouldn't need to be brought forward. So the change there is, it's got its hearing scheduled now in early March.
How are we represented on that board?
We're not. In terms of, is there someone from Carroll?
Yeah.
No, no. The bill, the way the, the, it was set up, was I think they said there were twenty-one applicants for eleven seats, I believe. Most of those applicants have come from I ninety-five corridor.
Yeah.
Got whittled down to, to the eleven, and they were, were seated, so.
So out of that eleven, how many are either Carroll, Allegheny, Garrett, Washington, eastern shore, Cecil?
Zero. Yeah, I, I don't know specifically, but I, I listened to the arguments that, that Senator Hershey made. And he didn't talk to the specific people that had been chosen, but he noted there was not representation from those geographic areas.
Right, that's why this bill's there, so that you have at least four members from outside the people that are already there. You have someone from the eastern shore, someone from western Maryland, someone from southern and northern.
I'll identify the individuals. Yeah, but I feel like, you know, we're, we're putting a bill in to be seated at the kids' table.
Well, I see what you're saying.
I mean, you're trying to get to the table, but you're still at the kids' table, and will there be attention?
Yeah, and the, and the argument from Senator Pinsky was, we, we had to choose from the applicant pool. And no one from those areas applied. So that's part of the challenge, is you don't have anyone step don't have anyone step up from those areas.
No, that's right.
It can't be represented.
Yeah.
Uh, a, another interesting bill, uh, Senate Bill eight fifty-six, House Bill one thousand four, which would require each public school in the state to have a registered nurse. Uh, the, the issues that were brought forward on that, there were some counties that, uh, staffed their school nurses in a different way, for example, through the Board of Health. And during the pandemic, when the schools were closed, they were able to pull those nurses back and put them on duty related to COVID. So, uh, generally speaking, the, the, uh, the body voted to, uh, oppose that bill. There's also, uh, obviously, a cost associated with that.
Is that unified to oppose?
Well, we don't talk about the individual votes, but I would say it was overwhelming.
Well, not individual, but...
It, it was overwhelming, yeah. Uh, I'm, I'm against it, but I would have probably been one of the only ones. But I'm against it, not because of obvious reasons, but I think it's really important to have a nurse in every school in today's world. But my argument would not have went very far, because some heavy hitters had other things to say. And it all came down to money.
Right.
So, I just, I was quiet.
And they also talked about the size, the size of the schools. Some schools are, are relatively small. What they do, if they're closed, they share a nurse between two schools and stuff like that.
Right.
Because it makes sense economically to do that. Doesn't, I mean, it would be better to have a nurse in every school. I'm not saying it wouldn't.
Right.
But you also have to look at the money that it costs to, to do that. As the school's relatively small, they, they don't see the bang for the buck, basically.
I mean, unfortunately, I mean, you, you think of the Century High School student whose life was saved because the nurse was on hand. Fortunately, with, uh, the RGC, they were able to get the Woodbine, you know, fire there, and this, this boy's life was saved. But it was because the nurse was there and knew how to do the AED and do everything. So...
Well, this is another example. If these bills come forward.
Yeah.
And there's some type of funding for these bills, they get a lot more support. But when those bills come forward, say, you have to do it, and by the way, figure out how to find the money to do it, and these tight budgets, it doesn't get a lot of support because the budget's extremely tight. Not that this is not a good idea.
Right.
He's, he, he has to weigh it, that's all.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
If it does go, we're, we're already set here. So, that's why I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time on it. If we weren't, then I would have been a little bit more vocal, but I don't think there, I, I, I'm hopeful the BOE and CCPS doesn't entertain taking nurses out of our schools.
All right.
I'll leave it at that.
Wow.
And to be clear, I've never heard any talk about that.
Yeah.
But bills like this make people go, hmm.
Yeah, gives them, uh, opportunity.
Right, so, anyway.
Okay. No, thanks.
All right. You see, uh, Senate Bill seven ninety-five and House Bill eleven oh-one, this is restoration of community college funding based on the K formula. Uh, I saw, uh, Dr. Ball, I guess a week, week and a half ago, he was very happy about this one. Uh, and they scheduled the hearing there for early March. Uh, cannabis, that's the next big issue.
Before you go there?
Yes.
Talk about the, uh, other education bill, which, uh, which you, I talked about this last time, House Bill seven fifty-eight, and you got me the bill, and I do appreciate that. I just wanna bring this up again, because what it does, it does say that the, um, textbooks, other reading materials, videos, websites that you're gonna visit, all that stuff has to be posted online for any, any class that you're teaching, uh, plus all of your lesson plans. Now, it doesn't, what it doesn't say, so I was mistaken last week, lesson plans don't have to be posted in advance. They just have to be posted so everyone can see them. This is a bill, in my opinion, to censor teachers and control what they're putting out. And the fact is, if you wanna know what textbooks your child is using, what videos they're, they're watching, all you have to do is ask them. I don't know what the relationship between parents and students are, but it's, ask your child, can I see your textbook? What websites were you going to? What videos did you watch? What happened to school? That's, that's all you have to do. Bills, this is a useless bill, trying to intimidate teachers, in my opinion, to, to toe the line exactly what the, whoever puts this bill out wants. And this is, surprisingly enough, um, taken from a, uh, bills like this that are put out in Republican states. And of course, the people that signed on to this bill are all, are mostly the Republicans down here. And like I mentioned before, um, our, uh, Delegate Rose, Delegate Shoemaker, and Delegate Krebs have all signed on to this bill. I, I, I mean, I could go on and on, but you send the teachers, like I said last time, they're in school for four years, they don't have to be certified, they have to continue education, then you get your master's degree, and you still have to take additional courses, but we don't trust you to teach in a classroom. We wanna see everything you're doing. It's an absurd bill. I don't think it's going anywhere. I hope it doesn't. But I actually think we should write a letter against it and, and submit it, because it's, it's, if this doesn't go anywhere this year, someone's gonna bring something similar up next year. Can almost guarantee it.
Is it getting bipartisan support at all?
I don't think so, but...
What's the status of that, Mike?
Yeah. I, I haven't looked, frankly, because I don't believe it really has a chance.
Okay, 'cause it's no point in writing a letter unless it gets signed or gets a hearing.
Yeah, well, it, it will get a hearing.
Oh, it will?
Well, every bill gets a hearing. Yes.
I wouldn't get out of committee. I, I'll emphasize, this is an election year, so we're all seeing more stuff like this.
Yeah.
And we should tread lightly sometimes.
Yeah, from, from my perspective, I think this is more of a statement than an actual effort.
Yeah, I, I think it is too, but I think we have to make a statement against it. That's my, my, you know, I don't think this bill will pass. I don't think it will. And I know it's an election year, which is maybe a reason these Republicans brought this up, but I just think it's...
Use your word.
An absurd bill, and, and should be there, and I'm hoping, no, just kidding. But I, I just think we should make a statement against it. That's what I believe we should do. Have, I mean, drop the letter, we'll sign it, it's opposing this bill for, for the hearing.
I mean, if there's a sense of censoring teachers, I am completely against that. I mean, I, I'm, I'm getting tired of people not trusting teachers throughout this pandemic, saying how teachers were taken advantage and going on vacations and, you know, teaching with their flip flops on and all this other garbage. I mean, there's a level of maturity that we gotta, you know, have when we're looking at our teachers and putting our children, you know, in their hands. And I have a very high, high respect for that, so I, I agree with you. Um, we don't do it with other professions, you know? We're not doing it with medicine, we're not doing it with, you know, I mean, they're, so, so if this is to curtail teaching, then we've got a problem. I mean, so I, I, I agree with you. I just, um, I, my thing is, I'm not sure what the, honestly, what the value, if there's a value in doing it, then I'm all for it.
The, um, keep in mind, this is the worst time in the world. You can't hire teachers. You can't hire nurses.
Right.
You can't hire anybody. So, now you wanna go in and add something like this to it? Why bother with that profession if, you know? And then, as you know, as well as I do, your curriculum in September, it's gonna change by February or March. You're gonna have to adjust things. It's not gonna stay what they put out there, and somebody's gonna try to hold accountable. Well, it was published in August, that this is where you should be here. It doesn't work that way. There's too many other things happen, so, uh, if you want to, uh, no problem.
Yeah, I don't, as long as we have the right details and everything, I don't have problems.
Yeah, I, I would, I would guess, if you asked me to guess, I would say that Mabe would probably oppose it.
I would think.
And certainly...
I would think they would too.
Maryland State Education Association will certainly be at the table, and they have an awful lot of influence.
Yeah, that might, I mean, that might be a better way to do it, is if they oppose it, we could sign on, see what they say, but sign on to what they say, because they'll probably have a well-thought-out, comprehensive reason about why not to do this, except, you know, I mean, then we could say, okay, you know, the Carroll County Board of Commissioners agrees as well, something like that.
I'll take whatever direction you want.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we wait and see what, how they line up, and we'll come, we'll come in with that.
Okay, yeah.
Just keep your eye on it and see, you know? Instead of just putting it out there until... I think that's a good idea.
All right, happy to do that. So, cannabis, the next big issue. Um, I've given you some details on, on the bills. Um, let me just set it up in the beginning. So, the Speaker of the House indicated early on she would prefer a strategy that takes the issue of legalization and decriminalization to referendum. And should that pass, then begin the work of putting together a program to, to take it forward, beginning with next session. Um, that's not the way her Chair of Judiciary Committee has chosen. He's developed a bill that really sets up a full legalization and, and regulation regime for this. Um, it also would in, would include setting up conditions for the release of people incarcerated for low levels of possession and then basically decriminalize possession, uh, going forward. So, that did have its, its hearing, uh, earlier this month, or the, or I should say this week. Um, the, the, the two Senate bills are, are actually more expansive, uh, because they bring in local governments. They give lo, local governments the authorization to prevent these, uh, retail sales locations in your county. They also authorize you, if you choose to cite them, to charge up to three percent local sales tax. Um, also, it specifically says they have to adhere to planning zone regulation. So, you do have authority in here to deal with the issue as you see fit. Now, will any of these bills pass? That remains to be seen. I, I'm guessing if leadership has their way, they probably won't, and we'll get some more simplistic bill that just puts the issue on, on the, uh, you know, on the, on the referendum, uh, for the election, and then move forward from there. But when these other hearings come up, we'll be watching them closely, because they do go into much more detail and, and particularly on the local government's, uh, piece of it. And...
Mike?
Yes?
Quick question, and if the three percent local sales tax, uh, were to occur, would that be for the end user? Would that be a total of nine percent? Like, 'cause the state would still have a six percent sales tax, and then the county could have up to three?
Actually, I think the states, uh, in here, I think the state can go higher. I think they can go as much as ten, I believe.
And then the three would be on top?
And then the three would be on top of that, right.
Whatever, oh, interesting.
I like the concept of the, the revenue, the local control, and I also like that the part about the expungement of some criminal convictions, 'cause I know that this charge has disproportionately affected the minority population, and that is restricting a lot of minorities from getting jobs that they, they'd like, but said they have a possession of having to join or something, and it restricts them. So, if we can reform that, that would be very helpful for minority employment as well.
Exactly, yeah. And these bills have a big component around, uh, you'll, you'll remember in the medical cannabis, uh, license granting controversies, where there weren't enough, um, minority applications, or, or, I should say, leases were, or licenses were granted to enough minority, uh, applicants. So, that, there are a lot of, uh, a, a lot of the bills speak to the granting of licenses and, and, uh, and, and, and they contain the issues of...
Jurisdictions that have a larger minority population, this will have a greater impact upon them, their employment too, so...
Absolutely, absolutely. Yep, that's the intent. Uh, also, a, a bill that is back from last year in, in, in some form, uh, Public Information Act and Records Related to Police Misconduct. It prohibits the, uh, the county from charging a fee for the first five hundred pages of a record, uh, related to police misconduct. There are significant resources required for that. It's not just, uh, printing five hundred pages of material. It's all the redacting and reviewing that goes along with that. So, that, that's got a hearing scheduled. Um, then a couple of bills here where there are some, some changes in the Behavioral Health Crisis Response Services, uh, where they want to prioritize health, uh, behavioral health responses over police responses to these mental health crises. They were able to amend that language to minimize law enforcement rather than, uh, than prioritize the health response over law enforcement. Uh, the Senate version did pass, the House with that amendment, excuse me, the Senate did pass with that amendment, so it's now over in the House for review. Um, and then the, the nine-one-one omnibus bill, uh, is, uh, scheduled for a hearing in Finance next month. The three-one-one system bill, so we heard that one yesterday, Senate Bill seven forty-nine, House Bill one thousand three, uh, it would create a statewide three-one-one system, which is for emergence, uh, non-emergency calls. So, you think about people calling in, about, you know, having their trash picked up, streetlights are out, water, water bill issues, that sort of thing. Uh, there are several counties in the city of Baltimore that now have those three-one-one, and their intent really is to take, uh, strain off of their nine-one-one centers. Uh, this would, uh, establish a statewide system. It would allow the counties to keep their three-one-one systems, but, uh, if you choose not to, you can opt into the state three-one-one system. Uh, so it creates a three-one-one board. Uh, there's a lot of representation from, uh, from, uh, two, two reps from urban nine-one-one centers, two from rural nine-one-one centers, and a Mako rep, and we're asking for a little more, uh, participation in that. Uh, I know there's some concerns that Scott Ham will raise to me about how those emergency calls that may find their way in the three-one-one system, statewide system, get transferred to the nine-one-one system in a timely manner. Uh, my guess is, I, I looked at a lot of the language that the board will be, be putting together, all the, the regulations and, and structure of how this will happen. So, I'm confident that kind of thing will be addressed in that. Uh, a bill to classify nine-one-one dispatchers as first responders and emergency responders, uh, that is gonna be supported. That, it, it, it doesn't go to any tax or retirement enhancements. Uh, it's things like, uh, I, the first one I saw was in the alcohol provision of state law, where there are organizations that if fifty-one percent of their members are first responders, they have a certain benefit in their, their alcohol license. So, they would be included in that category. Uh, service animals, they would be included. So, it's, it's that kind of thing. Uh, a goo, a good thing, as it was, as it was described. And, um, last, a bill that you recognize, Commissioner Wentz, the House Bill ten fifty-two, gas piping systems, where it would require or eliminate flexible plastic piping, um, in, inside a residence, uh, residential or commercial, um, and require steel piping. Um, so I would suspect that the only people that will have an issue with that will be builders, and they'll, they'll be part of that conversation, I'm sure.
Yeah, that, that piping has been determined to be directly responsible for a couple line of duty deaths over the last year or two. Uh, and, uh, the Chief of Frederick County called me and said, hey, can you get, get a little bit more involved in getting the right folks and, you know, on board with this? So, that's why I brought it up yesterday at Mako, and we'll see what they do. I don't know. Sometimes they don't wanna do if it's not impactful, as you well know, Mike, but I think this one's impactful. So, I hope they, I hope they, uh, they honor my request and, and take it. So, we'll see.
So, is this pipe leaking, or is it causing, or is it, if there's a fire already there, this is more likely to explode or something?
Actually, it's been determined that, uh, when lightning hits a building, it, it provides a chase for it, and it, it, uh, it attracts it and provides that, uh, avenue for the lightning strike, if it hits on the roof.
It grounds it.
And up in the basement. And then, that's why they determined, because the last line of duty in Frederick County, and there was one in Howard County as well, uh, they went in on a, on a house fire and found out it was a full-blown basement fire and fell through the floor. So, and they've determined that this is one of the most prominent avenues of travel for lightning strikes.
The flex, flexible piping or the, or the steel?
The flexible.
Flexible.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Yeah, it does encounter too.
Yeah, so anyway, we'll see where it goes, but I, I, I'm hopeful that, uh, I told Sanderson, he owes me one anyway. But I, I, I'm hopeful that, I told Sanderson he owes me one anyway, so we'll see.
Well, one of the aspects of that too is a lot of gas emergencies and, and sometimes gas explosions are from people that don't connect appliances properly.
Right.
And that's what they're using to make the connections and they'll do it right.
Like hooking up a gas dryer, so it's, it's probably the number one thing.
Exactly, I had the same situation of steel piping, but the actual connection is that flexible tubing. I mean, I did it right with Teflon tape and soap for leaks and that sort of thing. But if you don't do that, which a lot of people don't understand-
There's some real horrible tragedies over there.
Yep, and you of all people would know that, Mr. Fowler.
Precisely, precisely.
Can you do me a favor, different topic? And when the delegation talked about the bills, you know, and you and I and Mr. Burke participated. Can you provide me the, the vote, you know, who voted for, against, and/or abstained? Okay?
Yes.
On the different recommended bills?
I will.
I would appreciate that. Okay, thanks.
So I hope that was brief.
Is there anything more for Mr. Fowler? Hearing none, I appreciate it. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Doyle. Wonderful seeing you in person.
Times are changing, so I get to see you first.
That's right.
Well, I'm not running around with my hair on fire anymore, I think. That's more of it. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
See if I can remember how to do that.
It's like magic when you get here.
How magical. I can move it?
Who's driving? Do you, if you wanna drive?
Crystal's driving.
I just, I don't need any help. I'm not helping myself.
I am driving. We were not aware she was coming in person today, I've got it.
Sorry.
The voice from above.
So this is our update for this week and I get to smile because it's a positive update and we're moving in the right direction. And we're moving there quickly. So our statewide positivity is down to three point five. Hospitalizations are significantly lower, like forty percent in a week. So these are all great numbers. Our local data, next slide, is improving. So we've had a hundred ninety-four positives since last week's report. Our positivity rate is seven point one, so we're trending right down there. We did have three deaths since the last week's report and the deaths, I do have to remind everybody that the deaths do lag. So sometimes the data changes from week to week and you'll see that. And that these positives don't include at-home test kits. Some states have a mechanism where they're collecting them on a more regular basis. Maryland has a QR code and a website where you can enter them, but there's no real obligation to do that when we get these tests out. Next. So our data for the sixth through the twelfth is showing that the positive antigen test and the probable cases and the at-home test kits are not included, of course, at two twenty-three, which is moving in the right direction. Like you can see a couple of weeks ago, we were, what, eight weeks ago? Not even eight weeks ago. Five weeks ago, we were at sixteen hundred, so we're, we're doing well. We are still considered in high transmission, which is why we're still recommending masks in place where you can't socially distance properly. Or that there's not six foot, not, and, and there's not better ventilation. So we are still recommending that. Next. The hospital data for the first, for the second time ever, it flipped where we had more deaths, not, more hospitalizations in fully vaccinated people and less hospitalizations in non-vaccinated people. You can see that little flip we did last week. Not really sure what that's about yet. There is a lot of, you know, trans- high transmission with fully vaccinated people right now. Next slide.
If I can, I thought the reason for that, from what I was reading-
Oh, did they, they did the, yes.
Is the number of people that are fully vaccinated.
It has increased.
You have a much larger pool to draw from, therefore, most likely, just by simple mathematics and statistics, more people will, will, you know, contracted and move for it.
There's a couple of things that have happened with data this week. And I did tell Commissioner Ralston that I was gonna get into this a little bit. One report we received this week highlighted and said, oh, we, we've done some corrections for reinfection. So that was interesting. We've also heard, just last night, so I've been since six thirty this morning trying to catch up on all of this, that the immunet data, which is how they do the COVID dashboard in the state of Maryland, is not as comprehensive as they first thought. It does not include vaccinations that occurred in other states or on military bases and things like that. So apparently behind the scenes, they've been working to get that data in, in the, the data set that they're gonna release. And that is how, what happened with Anarono County Schools. Was, was able to get a copy of their data ahead of time and saw that their rate of, their vaccination rate for the five plus population met the eighty percent threshold, which is why they are, have moved to go no mask. So that, of course, means I've had multiple emails and phone calls this morning. We're at seventy-seven percent based on the data that I have. So I, I just wanted everybody to know that. I've communicated that. I do not think that they corrected the data overnight. They were working to, but I was told that they didn't think they were gonna have it done. I looked at this morning's report and this morning's report looks pretty much standard with yesterday's report. And I wouldn't expect a significant change until they make this data correction. When I find out more about that, I will definitely let everybody know. But at this point, I've just been told that to expect the data to change. And maybe significantly in some areas more than others. So these are ICU beds and our acute beds that are being used for COVID. And you can see this is a great place to be. There's very few of them right now being used for COVID. Next slide. Our, our deaths, we had, the deaths are, are definitely trending down. And we've only had four deaths total added since last week's report. The majority of the deaths do continue to be in unvaccinated or younger ages. And I think that's on the next slide. It breaks down the ages. So not fully vaccinated, there were forty-four. Thirteen of those occurred in the forty to fifty-nine age range. And thirty-one in the older than sixty. Fully vaccinated and not boosted, there were eight deaths. They were all over the age of sixty. And fully vaccinated and boosted, there was one under the age of sixty and all the other ones were over the age of sixty. And you are absolutely correct, Commissioner Frazier. We have a very high rate of vaccination in the older popul- in the over sixty populations, like ninety-nine percent. Next slide. So our, our vaccinations as a whole are at seventy-six point eight percent, almost seventy-seven percent have had at least one dose. Seventy-one point seven percent are fully vaccinated. And about fifty-four percent of those who are fully vaccinated have received either a third dose or a booster. That's the number we're, we're looking to increase. That's the number the state's looking to increase overall. As I said, so when we look at the data, you have to be really careful that you're comparing apples to oranges or apples to apples. Because there's been some questions about what the state Board of Education meant by the eligible population versus your population. So if it's the eligible population, it's five and above. And if it's the entire population, you see we're about at seventy-two percent. If it's over five, we're at seventy-seven percent. So that's gonna be, I, apparently it's up for debate right now, what was met. Apparently one thing was said verbally and one thing is in writing. So I, that's not my fight, that's somebody else's fight. And then next slide, we're, we're moving, oh, here's our rates of vaccination in here. You see ninety-nine, ninety-five. As you go down, you see there are less vaccinated, the five to nine population is the five to eleven, actually. This is just the way the data gets broken down, the only way we can access it is during, in, in these age groups. So you can see that that's the population that has the lowest. But they've also only been able to get vaccinated since December third. So we're not looking at a very high number. Next slide. We are, are seeing case decreases across the state and country. And the CDC's metrics are gonna be changing again. I just want you all to hear this from me. They've been out there, they briefed the White House yesterday on what they think the new items we should be looking at. Now that we have the majority of the population vaccinated, they're starting to look more at our hospitalizations and less at the transmission rates is what they're talking about moving away from. So over the next few weeks, we, I'll probably have stuff to share on what the CDC is recommending and where the state of Maryland is going and what the school system's doing. But we're still recommending because right now the guidance we have is to, to go by the transmission rate. That we still are in high transmission. And we're recommending to wear a well-fitting mask when in public and around people at high risk to avoid crowds. Gather outdoors as much as possible, postpone travel, test when symptomatic and receive all your recommended vaccines. So the next slide, I think, talks about what we're doing right now. So our vaccines are afternoon and evening clinics for ages five plus. We had our first walk-in last week of a five-year-old to be vaccinated, so that was exciting. It was not somebody who was scheduled, they actually walked in with their family. Our testing center is moving today back to the health department. Where the ag center has a bull riding competition. And we decided this was a very good time for us to move because we're only seeing about fifty people a day over there. So we're moving the National Guard over with us and we're gonna do that from there. Test kits are going out through the library. This week, we did receive about six thousand test kits from the state. So there's a, uh, three times amount what we've been getting. In addition to that, and I don't want to say this out loud, cause I don't want to jinx it, but I will. We're supposedly getting fifty-two thousand test kits tomorrow. If that happens, they will all be going to the libraries. And then next week, we are to get the second batch, which should be a hundred thousand. And those, I'm working on a plan to get them out into the community and not just have them warehoused somewhere. I want to make sure that people can get to them and it's not just at one place. Masks are continuing to be distributed. We had twenty thousand masks come in last week. They were packaged and out the door to the libraries. I know that most pharmacies, you can get them. I know Safeway had them out on display, just you could pick them up down back by their pharmacy area. I know that I'm being pushed out communications from almost every pharmacy in Carroll County that they now have test kits available. Which is fine, but ours are free and we're gonna get them out and we're gonna make sure people have access to them. And then I think that was my last slide. I could be wrong. So all good news, all trending in the right direction, all going where we want to go. I know that everybody wants a break, everybody wants to be good for a while. We're coming into spring. If we can keep going in the direction we're going and there's more outdoor activities, I could foresee, you know, nobody has a crystal ball and nobody has a magic wand. So if we did, we'd have fixed this by now or we'd have known what was coming before it was. So we're looking at some other opportunities. There's a pilot or opportunity to work with NACO on some wastewater testing, which has been used and recommended by a lot of other states and a lot of other scientists. So I think the city of Westminster has expressed some interest, so we're gonna try to move forward with that.
Okay. Any comments, questions?
I want to say, thank you, Ms. Doyle. It's pleasant to see you happy and less stressed. You have been on a long hard road for two years.
Yes.
So seeing you smile is a pleasure. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
To be clear, Carroll County government has never put mandates on the Carroll County community. Full stop. We had mandate in place for a short period of time. That was in line with our governor's mandate for our government facilities. That has been lifted, so we have never put mandates in place. The mandates that are put in place currently in the public, in the private sector, it is up to them to do their own due diligence to make their decisions as shop owners, as facilities, whatever they may be, to put masks mandates in place. And it is our role to be respective of that. But it is not our role and nor have we done any mask mandates because we still get a lot of that traffic. The Board of Education makes the determination for the schools, not Carroll County government. Although the Board of Education, some will say is a subsidiary, they are not, they are elected officials to make those decisions. And we'll see where that goes, but for, for the school systems. I just wanted to, because we have a, a couple of events happening next week. And I'm saying this to the, to the community, not to you Sue, but it's the state of the county and the Board of Education joint meeting. The Board of Education joint meeting is gonna be held here in the Reagan Room downstairs. And masks will not be necessary as long as we can maintain the social distancing that's appropriate. So we are going to do our best to spread out and have that opportunity. The Chamber of Commerce hosting in the Community Arts Center venue, the auditorium for the state of the county, the Community Arts Center has put mask mandates in place for the arts center. So therefore, we respect that in attendance and participation. Because there'll be a lot of folks there and then also in the auditorium. Right? Okay. So again, appreciate it. I don't think the sciences have changed. I think the numbers are changing. And I think doing due diligence for all of us in Carroll County has gotten to us where we are. So I'm very proud of the direction we're going. And obviously all the work that you are doing in teamwork with, with others. So is there any comments?
No, you answered my question because it's all about Anarono County now.
Yeah.
So I woke up to like-
Yeah.
And I was, and I've just been running since trying to keep up with it. Cause people have just been calling going, can we do that? And I'm like, I, I have to figure this out.
Yeah, I know the parameters were pretty clear, or they were very clear. So they, they met them, so off they go. I'm surprised that, that they met them. I mean, Anarono has, I mean, I, not, not, that's not a negative comment, but they, you know, they're much bigger than we are. There's a lot of, there's a lot of schools there and a lot of, you know, a lot of people, so.
A lot of diversity.
I'm just a little surprised that they made the-
Montgomery County has done a fantastic job vaccinating their kids. Faster than any of the rest of the counties. We were all asking how they were doing that, Montgomery County. But, you know, I also know that the parents there did a little bit more about looking for other resources and other places where they could get vaccines and not just, cause you know, at first, all of these vaccines came out very limited. And they were prorated based on our population. But that doesn't mean you couldn't have gone to another clinic in another area if you were willing to go. So I think people were just a little bit more savvy and they could get to DC, I guess, too, very easily.
And the mass vaccination sites in the early-
Yes, they were-
-stages were Montgomery, Prince George's.
In much more populous areas.
That's true, I didn't think about that. I expected that one, so, well, I know we're close, so.
We are, we are close and it's, it's gonna depend on that metric. And it's also going to depend on whether they interpreted as those eligible or the total population, so. And that's, you know, that's nothing I decide, so.
Well, I appreciate-
Thank you so much.
I just get to report the data.
I would just say, I appreciate Commissioner Ralston bringing up the mask requirement at the Arts Council. I will not be attending because of the mask requirement. So if media wants to accommodate some sort of situation where I can read off my speech off that facility, I'm looking forward to being accommodated, but I will not be attending that facility with a mask.
Thanks, Sue. Citizen Service Celine. Request approval for annual plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-two for Carroll County Bureau of Housing to the displayed, to be displayed for forty-five days. Tim, did you want to kick this off? Or?
Uh, no, I think they're good.
Okay.
He will, he will guide us and make sure we do it correctly, so.
Good luck.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm here before you today.
I'm here before you today um with Danielle Yates, our Bureau Chief of Housing and Community Connections, and Paul Moffett is also with us in the audience. He is our um Housing Choice Voucher Program Manager. Uh and we're before you today to review our updates for our housing annual plan um for FY twenty-two and to request to display that plan for forty-five days for public comment. The Bureau of Housing and Community Development, on behalf of you, the Board of County Commissioners, administers your Housing Choice Voucher Program for Carroll County. Um and each year we are tasked with looking at our annual plan and the information. It's very comprehensive and the information that we have in that plan to make sure that it is meeting the needs of the community. Every year, we come before you with some recommendations for changes that need to be made to make sure we're updating and meeting the the needs of the community. So Danielle's gonna walk us through those recommendations. We did put in your packets in your binders, the specifics of those recommendations as Danielle's walking through them with you.
So good morning, Commissioners. As Celine noted, the fiscal year twenty-two annual plan updates reflect three adjustments to language related to our Section Eight Housing Assistance Program. In Chapter Four, which is titled Applications, Waiting List and Tenant Selection, we have adjusted language in two sections. The first adjustment falls under the Special Admissions Section. We have added language further explaining the mainstream voucher program eligibility requirements. Since this voucher program is still fairly new, HUD has released definitions around several key requirements of the program. And this is the additional information that we have added for clarity. The second adjustment to language is in Chapter Four as well, Local Preference Section. We have adjusted language to clarify our agency's local priority preference for applicants that live and work in Carroll County. Our final adjustment is in Chapter Five, titled Briefing and Voucher Issuance. To accommodate for emergencies, we have added additional sentence noting oral voucher briefings may be conducted telephonically or via any virtual meeting platform. Would anyone have any additional comments for us in regards to the adjustments to our administrative plan? As well, if you're unfamiliar with the plans that we that we have made or the adjustments, I do have copies here which should also have been included in your packet.
The vouchers that are provided, um you know, the the veteran vouchers, there's fifteen. Have we used all fifteen?
We have. We are working, we have one that we are actually working to lease up, but the fourteen are leased up and being utilized.
Are we gonna be requesting more? I mean, I know we're doing a a point in time homelessness. And I do want you to talk about that for a second as well because the communities need to understand that clarification on who's out there and how we are doing our best to recognize the needs because there's a lot of um I don't know, just different ideas and thoughts and we gotta all work together on doing this. Because there are folks and needs. Uh and again, you know, my passion besides all Carroll Countians are veterans. Um so the numbers have gone up or have they stayed the same or where are we at? Um and how do we use the point in time homelessness with this? Can you kinda walk me through that?
So as far as the point in time count that we do, of course, it's a mandated count that we do um annually. Typically, it's in the last ten days of January. Because of COVID and how rates have fluctuated so high, we're able to go postpone thirty days to the end of February. So it's next Wednesday, February twenty-third. We are doing what's called a sheltered and unsheltered count. So the sheltered count is, of course, the account that we take through all of the shelters that we have here in Carroll County. The unsheltered count is where we actually go on foot in that day. We start about seven AM in the morning. We have eight teams and we go across Carroll County and areas where we may find individuals who are homeless. And on the streets, we go through encampments that we know of. We work with the Sheriff's Department and other munis- police municipalities, excuse me, to identify those encampments. We also go to all park and rides, your Walmart parking lots, um all of our parks. It's just, we have a team that goes together with outreach and we come up with the areas that we hit. And like I said, we have eight teams that will be throughout the county that day looking for our unsheltered and counting those folks and completing a questionnaire as well.
So yeah, so again, if um if the newspaper wants to pick up on something that's very important to us, this is something they should pick up on. And it's incumbent on Carroll County community that is aware of homelessness to identify it and bring it to your attention so it can be put into the numbers to get the resources necessary to take take care of Carroll Countians. Again, um my concern is that there are some that are, you know, on the side saying, I know more than you know. I say, I don't want you to know more than we know. I want us all to know everything together to take care of homelessness.
And I do wanna also say, when when we talk about the count that we're going out and we're doing this count, it's much more involved in that. Like she said, there's gonna be a survey and and the point is to talk to individuals who are homeless, to really understand the why of how they became homeless, how they ca- came to Carroll County um and and where they were before they became homeless. How long have they been homeless? These are very important pieces to the puzzle for us to work with them and work through where they've been so we can help them to become housed. Um and so that's the other piece of it, to understand the why. Um the other side of it is also as far as working with our whole continuum of care, our Circle of Caring Homelessness Board. I I just sent an email out to the distribution list. We have over a hundred and fifty individuals throughout the community. These are other agencies, um community members, faith-based partners, um other other um state agencies, local nonprofits. You name it, soup kitchens that work with us very collectively to to really target the needs of our homeless population and help us identify these folks, help us go out on these um counts, help us to work on a daily basis with resources, sending information out to the group as a whole to make sure people are connected to the resources we have in Carroll County. And we have great resources here. And and again, we do have some folks that are chronic homeless that are very difficult um because they do not want to receive services. And we have to continue to try to be creative and figure out how we can engage them because we don't want anyone lost regardless of where they may be in their personal journey with homelessness and and other barriers that they have to becoming stably housed. So.
Now, I appreciate no one, I apologize, just real quick, no one agency or individual has ownership on this identification and care. And I appreciate the Circle of Care and work you're doing because it's gotta be all of us. We all gotta work together to recognize the importance of homelessness that exists, why homelessness exists, and then how we are going to step up and minimize the homelessness that's in our community. I apologize.
How mobile was that group? Do you have an idea, I mean, from one year to the next, same people, what percentage stay? Yeah, how transient?
And what we can do, so as Celine said, we do a survey with every individual. And that's how we get our count. And what we do is we have, like she said, committees. So we have our chronic committee. And what it is, is we look back several years to identify, are there repeat individuals, which typically fall in our chronic? And we have a special group where we're we're looking to try to identify markers that maybe are key indicators of why they're still homeless. We try to build those relationships and rapport and trust with those folks to get them to enter into services with us to help end that homeless stint. So, you know, we're constantly looking at the numbers. I know it sounds like running reports to see if, you know, our folks are recurrent as far as homelessness and then building the relationships to work with them to try to get them off the streets and into shelter.
Is it half, third? Do you have any idea how many re- reoccur?
As far as through the pit count versus the repeat, I don't wanna get, I know with our chronic numbers, we're looking at typically about forty individuals on our list that are chronic. Um many of them probably have been, well, when you're chronic, just so you know, you had to have a stint of homelessness at least over three hundred and sixty-five days or it's for occurrences within the past year. So typically, those people are gonna be the ones we see every year with the pit.
And about how many of those are veterans? Do you have any idea?
As far as count for the day, typically, we only get around, I think it's sixty individuals that are actually street homeless. Um your unsheltered account, of course, because, or your sheltered count, excuse me, because it's gonna be your um folks that are in the shelters is gonna be a little higher, especially about a hundred and some. But asking specifically about veterans?
Right, veterans. I think we we had just pulled a report of of um the past, was it six months of veterans that we had worked with? And we had worked with twenty homeless veterans over the past six months. Now, some of them are housed now. So it it's in, you know, the data ebbs and flows, yes. So it's hard to pinpoint when you're asking these numbers. It's very hard to pinpoint. And that's why this point in time count, some people don't love the point in time count because it's just a snapshot of that day. Right? And so you may have people that are hospitalized, you may have people that are staying on the couch with a friend for that day that we we have not identified. There there's a lot of things that that fluctuate with that pit count. But it is one, you know, it's required for us to do that. And it does provide us with a a one-day count where we actively go out as a team and make sure we're hitting all of those different locations.
If I may, I'm concerned about exposure of our personnel to biohazards and assault. Is there something that you're doing to prepare for this? Do they get an escort of a deputy sheriff? What is in place to make sure that air personnel are protected?
So we have trainings. And then we also, what'll happen is, we've had meetings amongst the along the way. But um next week, we have one set up where we work closely with the Sheriff's Office and Westminster Police. They give us guidance as far as your do's and don'ts. But then also the Health Department um will give us like the main the current COVID guidelines and so forth. So we're kind of following those protocols and procedures.
Like if someone's an IV drug user in a camp and there's needles laying around. So as long as everyone's trained.
So we have hold harmless bags that we will be giving out, but also there are two um actual primary contacts we have with the Health Department. So if we run into an individual, one who may need Narcan or to transfer out, or if there are issues with biohazards, we can contact that day and they'll be out to take care of events like that.
Well, it's nice to know you guys are proactive on this because it would be a tragedy if something happened to one of our personnel at one of these encampments.
And and we talk about that a lot. And also HUD puts out a lot of guidance surrounding this because it's a national count that is done. And so there there are always trainings online as well about and newest safety protocols and how to be safe while you're doing your counts. And I'm not sure if um you all recall, but we did, we were going to do our pit count a month ago and working with the Health Department with the COVID surge. And in that time, we decided for the safety of our team, we were going to postpone that count until next week, which ended up being a very um wise decision. Yeah.
You know, you do, we do a lot in Carroll County due to you, I mean, on this whole area. And our veterans are definitely looked out for. I know that. We made calls, I think all of us at different times. So uh you run across somebody on Saturday, Sunday, whatever, they're handled right away. And I really appreciate your attention to that. And if I just have one second on this one, I just wanna, I gotta call this one. Just the other day, elderly gentleman from uh uh he was dealing with the Department of Aging Disabilities. Could just raving about the person, I think it was Nicole, spent time four o'clock in the afternoon. She spent two hours on the phone with him helping get through the issues he had. And he couldn't believe county government helped him that well. And uh I just wanted to point that out to us, but you do this across the board. It's just not that department. I know that. So thank you.
Thank you for that. We'll make sure that Nicole knows about that. She she is the new supervisor for our Maryland Access Point Information and Assistance. Um and she's been doing a great job. So that's good feedback to have. I do wanna say also, just a reminder to everyone that we do have um our night-by-night shelter now that operates year-round. Previously, in years past, we had had just a cold weather shelter for cold weather months that served folks. But now we have been, um HSP operates that shelter going forward uh um year-round which provides emergency shelter for anyone that needs it. We don't turn folks away. So if there is a need when someone comes into Carroll County and they need to be housed in in an overnight situation to be out of the elements, we have that opportunity. And I think because of that, we have seen some more connectivity to people that we may not have worked with in the past. Uh where you ask about those numbers. So we are looking at the why to that. We've developed a new outreach survey beyond the pit count to really talk to the homeless individuals to say how, you know, the same questions. How did you end up homeless? How did you get here? What, where were you before? Um what do you think your barriers are, you know, and and what are your needs? And and a lot more detail in that survey. And we're gonna be looking at those going through the year as an executive committee in our continuum of care to really analyze that data to see how we can better impact folks and prevent, working more on prevention of homelessness.
How's our success rate in bringing these people in and making them self-sufficient? So people know out there that we're not just creating perpetual homelessness, that we're actually trying to uplift these people with other programs, get them in the job market.
I'm gonna let Danielle talk a little bit about our our three new Housing Stability Coordinator positions that we hired this year as part of the COVID funding.
So what we've created is, like Celine said, um three positions for housing stability. So with these positions, they're willing or they're willing and able to work with anyone who may be struggling at any point. So many of our folks who have received the ERAP, which is the Emergency Rental Assistance Program funding, who have been struggling through COVID begin um working with our folks. And what they do is they're gonna make connections and resources um for those individuals to different programs that can give them that support. It might be as simple as working out a budget. Um looking at, do they need food stamps, additional support through um many programs that we have? It could be finding out if they need to make a simple application to our Housing Choice Voucher Program for assistance as well. They can make connections with BERC because many of our folks have, of course, lost their job or have lost income because of the type of jobs that they held through COVID. So we're trying to make those connections and carry them through um to make sure there's stability. Um we've seen a great success rate as far as exactly how much. I I don't wanna overspeak because I'm not sure. I just know that um our stability coordinators have become valuable positions that assist many people within the community. And the way it works is anyone whatsoever that may be struggling can be referred and we will work with them. There's not a requirement as far as working with a specific program or someone else. Many times we have people that just walk in off the streets. One of our coordinators will take them and will work through any of the issues that they have to make sure that we can get success there in Independence.
I'm not, I'm, go ahead.
I'm sorry. And we connect them with mental he- uh health and addiction services as well? Because that seems to be the impetus that puts them in that situation.
Absolutely. So what we do is um they sit down one-to-one with the folks and they're gonna go over um many questions that we have to answer to see what the barriers are that they might be experiencing. And based on what they share is where we make those referrals and connections within other community agencies.
Thanks for sharing that with the public because it's so vitally important for the public to understand exactly what you're doing. Because I hear that whole thing like, oh, you're just perpetuating homelessness. No, we are not. We are showing compassion to these individuals, uplifting and turning their lives around. And I commend you both and all your staff for what you do. It's vitally important for our community to recover from this pandemic and you're incredibly important part of that. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I'm not sure what BERC is, but I do know what the Workforce Development Center is. But uh and I appreciate the work you're doing uh with that. I did that for the ladies in the back. But anyway, um you know, it's it's kinda like um getting folks out of confined spaces, out of jails and prisons. We don't want the recidivism, you know, to exist. So we're we're minimizing it. And you're using all the tools um at your disposal. My biggest concern is that there are still others out there that wanna do what's right and um are participating. And I want this circle to be complete and continue to bring folks into the mix. Because no one has the answer. All of us together will. Um and then my last comment is, what else do you need from us? I mean, you got the advocacy from us. You got the support with those positions. Is there more? And it's not necessarily now, but maybe something to go back to um and say, these are the things we want more of uh in order to to really minimize this. So.
And and I think as we're looking at that and we have, you know, every month we meet as an executive committee, as well as then every other month we meet as the full circle of caring. But we we look at where we are as far as some of the COVID funding and some of the rapid rehousing resources that we've been given that we typically don't have each year, right? And how that funding is coming through. And right now, we're going to be receiving additional funding through ERAP round two um for some additional rapid rehousing as well. So looking at the at that, when we're planning for years out, you know, the funding is there now. It's there. It's going to be there for the next several years. But further out, what does that look like for us? If that, if those numbers for rapid rehousing units are not going to be available past a certain year, what do we need to plan for? Where where do we sit? So that's gonna be um a a big piece of how we we analyze our data and try to make those determinations and and what that will look like for us if we don't have those funds. we we analyze our data and try to make those determinations and and what that will look like for us if we don't have those funds anymore.
I appreciate taking the tangent and talking about this because it's important. And knowing that we just did the press release for the um uh point in time contact. Uh it it ties together really well, it nests really well. But getting back on uh topic, I'm moving that the Board of Commissioners approve the display of the annual plan for forty-five days for public review and comment. Also announce a public hearing prior to April seventh, twenty twenty-two to consider approval to submit the FY twenty-two annual plan to HUD.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion, got a second, is there any further discussion? Seen, heard, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, ladies.
Thank you, commissioners.
I want to state that this week or last week, I was out walking at Creme Gold Park. I ran into Ms. Yates out there walking her dog, her two daughters, they have lovely dogs.
Thank you.
You set a good example after walking, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, speaking of BERC or at least workforce development, let's have Carroll County Workforce Development Staffing Recommendations to enhance the citizen and business services. Ladies, long time no see.
Good morning, good morning.
Morning.
If I could just take one second and just acknowledge um the work that they're doing at Citizen Services with homelessness and the rapid rehousing. We are in a conversation with the Grants Office and Celine's team about how we integrate workforce into the people that are receiving those services. Um and the unfortunate circumstances that lead people to homelessness. Um also, they're living in the moment and it's it's really hard to have everything in place to move forward sometimes. So the key is engaging people where they are in the moment until they're ready to take the next step forward. So just wanted to share that that's one of the things that we're working cooperatively with.
And you know, as as shared yesterday, um on the Governor's Workforce Development Board, it is to minimize the recidivism of those incarcerated. It's the same, you know, in respect to those that are homeless, to get them out of homelessness and keep them out of homelessness and minimize that as well, so. Um, okay.
Very good. Well, thank you for having us here today. We would, wanted to update you on uh the programs and services at Carroll County Workforce Development. As you know, we did the rebranding um probably last month and um I do want to thank Commissioner Rothstein for attending the, um I think it was the third meeting of the Carroll County Workforce Development Board. So he was able to share his work and experience with the Governor's Workforce Development Board and also, you know, his vision for what our local board could do um here in Carroll County. So that was very helpful, thank you for for being there. So the board, you know, represents um many of our industry sector partners and also um our workforce partners that are here in the community. I think we have a a good board and they're very excited. So we did share the new uh branding and logo with them yesterday. Um we also talked about, you know, the mission and some governance issues for the local board as they get started. And we shared with them some information about the programs uh that we have and some of the customer uh data that we're collecting at the Workforce Center. So uh moving on to the welding training program, um I wanted to give you an update on that. I know Commissioner Boucher has been over there and very supportive of what we've been doing. So we had our third cohort that started on Monday. And so there are eight uh individuals that are in that training program, so that's again, moving along very well. Um so to date, we've trained thirty-two um individuals in the welding certification and uh the training program with Earl Beck Technologies. Um that includes sixteen employees of Carroll County Government that we were able to train as well. So that's moving along, it's been so successful um that we've had, I know at least one person was hired by AVAPCO, we're connecting them with the local businesses as they come out of the program. The business reps are coming in, meeting the candidates and making them job offers. Um so there've been a placement at AVAPCO, a placement at FR Conversions. Um and then we actually have some individuals that are going into business for themselves and so they were connecting them with small business development uh support with that.
Ms. B, are we attracting minorities and females into the program?
Yes, actually there, you, I think you were there with the last cohort and there was a a female who was, I think she was the individual that was in business for herself. And then there was another minority that was represented there in that cohort, so yes.
I think she was probably the best welder too.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, but yeah, it it's definitely.
Females tend to have very good manual dexterity
Yes.
that is in excess of the male ability.
Yes. So so that's been good and we did do, I did do a little write-up for the Maryland Department of Commerce that they shared. So we got some statewide recognition that we're doing this program and and that's going very well. In fact, uh the there, we have enough people that are interested in a fourth cohort in April, so that will be April eighteenth. Um I think after that, trailer needs to go to Virginia for some other training down there, but we're talking about bringing it back in the fall. So that's going very well. Um the other new training program is the CDL Driver Training that uh we're standing up with Carroll Community College. So that program's gonna start on March fourteenth and we're recruiting individuals for that training program right now. Um and they'll get a commercial Class A driver's license, it'll be an eight-week training program. So uh that one's gonna uh be starting, as I said, on March fourteenth, so.
That legis, that uh law just changed, didn't it, first of February? That they have to have training, weeks of training prior to.
Um, yes, yeah. So that's, yeah, and so, I mean, we're hearing from local companies, obviously, they need, you know, the uh commercial Class A driver's license. So that's another uh successful training program that we're standing up with Carroll Community College.
Yeah, I know, I s- I spoke with Dr. Ball, I think it was last week, and he's very um appreciative, enthusiastic about this specific program, so.
Yeah, so I think.
It is, and the difference is, um typically, the company they work for, they're going down to Baltimore City for training. So the the classroom training's gonna happen here in the county, we're still trying to work out a location for the driving.
That takes up more room.
Yes.
He and I were talking, uh you know, maybe up um the new Random House up in uh Hampstead location. There are large parking lots up there. Um there is concerns of where you're gonna do it, but I think we're gonna find space.
Yeah, we put them in touch with a couple of those um property owners.
Airport.
Yeah.
Well, he is another one that's potential, but.
Yeah. So we're very excited about that, that's that's another new program that we're doing. So we were updating um the board about that and just wanted to bring you up to date. The other program that we've talked about before is the Premier Virtual uh Job Fair that we're hosting. We did one in January, um was very successful, gives an opportunity for the businesses and the job seekers to meet virtually. They can talk, you know, citizens can upload their resumes, they can, you know, actually have interviews and like a private chat room. Um they can offer them jobs and so that's that's been a successful format, you know, helps us get around, you know, having a bunch of people all together in, you know, one space. So the Premier Virtual Job Fair um is gonna be on February, that's the next one that we're hosting. So we're encouraging sign up now for businesses, um and they can get the information at the Workforce Center to to sign up. And of course, we're encouraging all of our customers to sign up as well, so that we can help make those connections. So that's February twenty-fourth. So um the other thing that we shared with the uh board yesterday was the Carroll County Workforce Development Organizational Chart. And you know, what we're here today to talk about too is some recommendations for some staffing, some additional staffing. And as we've transitioned uh this last year to become an independent workforce area and stand up our own workforce board, that certainly takes a lot of other time from the manager, from Heather's perspective to work with and manage the board as well as represent Carroll County in the region and in the state. Um we have a lot of direct reporting to the state now that we did not have before. Um obviously, we have some new uh grants, the new federal grants that we've received with the um American Rescue Act Plan Grants and um the the Rescue Act. So we have additional funding for workforce training and all of that takes additional capacity to manage all of that. Um as you know, uh at two-two-four North Center Street, we have our American Job Center, it's part of that network, that national network. And we have our local partners there that are housed with us. The Maryland Department of Labor has staffing and funds those positions. We have um adult education from Carroll Community College there. We also then have, you know, all of our staff that are working under these various grants. So traditionally, the uh Workforce Investment and Opportunity Act has been the primary funding for, you know, a lot of our positions. Uh uh again, and also supported by some funding with the county. So as we look at economic development and workforce development, one of the key things, obviously with a lot of the businesses, and you probably hear it from them directly, um is workforce. It's it's just a top concern, you know, where are we finding the people, where are we getting them, how are we training them, how are we keeping them? And that's, you know, a number one concern that we hear all the time. And so we're trying to address that with this additional funding. Uh we feel that business services, we've always had a business services uh consultant that's at the center. Um that's Scott Singleton. And so one of the new positions that Heather will be talking about is, you know, another business consultant to help us with that outreach, you know, to address some of the workforce concerns. There's a lot of money coming into the county, you know, through the Workforce Center as well as through some of our other partners, the Maryland Department of Commerce, the Maryland um MEP, the Maryland Manufacturing Extension Partnership, that everybody has some of these pots of money. But it takes people to help make it work, to get it to the businesses. So that's why, you know, we're talking about some of these positions today and that we feel that really, you know, the business services component is is a a big piece of that to help supplement what we're doing in terms of some of the outreach um to to the businesses and be able to enable them to be, access some of this money, you know, some of the grant funding for the training. And stand up more programs like, you know, the welding training and the CDL training and, you know, some of the other training programs. So I'll let Heather talk specifically about the um proposal for some of the staffing that we have to enhance uh the Workforce Development Center.
Did you have any questions about the organizational chart? I know on the screen it didn't show, um the Department of Labor does have a dedicated um veteran staff for disabled veterans and um the veterans employment.
Yeah.
Lots confusing to me, but as long as you guys know what's going on with us.
Yeah, we do, yeah, yeah. Um in the darker green are the positions under the specific Relief Act um and Rescue Act funds that we're looking to um add to our agency. Back in August, you did approve positions, but as um this is evolving, we do now have final rule for the American Rescue Plan um Act Funds. So we're coming to you today for some adjustments um that we would like approval, we're seeking approval for. The first one is, um we have a youth specialist position that we funded under our initial Relief Act Grant from the Department of Labor, which had a one-year um term on it. We hired that position later than we thought as a part-time person, knowing that we would continue that position under the ARPA funding beginning July first, twenty twenty-two. Um that position is available due to some staffing changes within the organization. So we can advertise this youth specialist position. But it makes more sense to go ahead and roll it into the full-time position now that it's open instead of waiting until July first.
Was that on the org chart?
Pardon me?
Was that on the org org chart?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, Chris, can you uh
Down at the bottom.
Put the org chart back up and leave it up so we can discuss it? Thanks. Okay.
They're in that, what would you call it, a bright green color, the ones in the open positions, yeah.
Yes, the brighter greens, so um.
Okay.
Down at the bottom, um we had, Eileen Vazella had filled that position and one of our our youth staff, our youth coordinator left, so she assumed that position. So that's what created the current vacancy. So what we're requesting is now to advertise that as a full-time position. I have the money within the RA grant and then I have it moving forward under ARPA for the next three years.
You want us um to go one by one on this or are you looking at, what what, what are you looking at us doing?
Yeah, just do all, yeah.
We can, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And so the next position we're asking for consideration is the reclassification of the um business services consultant to a manager position. Um Scott Singleton has been in that position. Um his job duties have changed, as Denise was addressing, under operating as an independent workforce board. He um is doing much of what the previous manager did and working directly with businesses. But also, under this expanded grant, we need to bring another business consultant in. Um a lot of the work I see us doing in the next three years is really addressing the shortage of workforce and helping businesses retain their employees, so upskilling um of incumbent workers. So we need more than one person on deck working with the businesses locally. And then the third position I'm looking for today is a contractual position. It is a um workshop facilitator. And as um an American Job Center, we need to provide basic career skills workshops. That includes um workshops such as resume development, interviewing skills, LinkedIn is a way to connect um with employers. And the person that was filling that position through the state has retired. And um they've had running vacancies in our American Job Center for in excess of one year. So to keep that current, I would like to utilize funds that I have contractually to um hire a consultant to run those workshops. So we'll have uninterrupted services to our job seekers.
And that would be a part-time contractual position.
Twenty hours a week or something?
Less than.
Yeah.
I mean, you're not looking for any local funding, you're looking for filling positions.
Correct.
When there's no local funding is is requested right now, is that because of?
Correct, under, under the business consultant, there is a correction, it's minimal impact. Um that position has ten percent local funding attached to it. But many times, we bill the um the grants for that, so we don't always utilize that money, but it is billed into our budget.
Okay, for the, there's no local funding requested because of the money you're getting from the relief relief Act Funds?
Either Relief Act or our WIOA grant, our ongoing federal grant.
So if the Relief Act Funds stop, the positions stop, or is funding coming from somewhere else?
So I can lay out our funding a little better, it's very um confusing. We have WIOA Funds, which are ongoing federal funds to provide um workforce opportunity, innovation and opportunity um funding, that's our traditional funding source. Then the State Department of Labor um initially gave us what are termed rescue funds. And those were to be used over the course of one year. We have ex- extended that, so we fully expend them um into twenty twenty-three. Our American Rescue Act funding has come through um not Department of Labor, but through Department of Commerce. So we are, or no, I'm sorry, US Treasury. Um that funding is, they're giving us it in two allotments. They give it to us this year and we'll get our second allotment next year, but it runs through June of twenty twenty-six. Um the idea with that funding, it came directly to the workforce boards, not through Department of Labor. Um it was an opportunity for the workforce boards to demonstrate um the need beyond the prescriptive nature of the WIOA Funds, which are serving those with the most barriers. So there are people that fall into gaps that may not qualify through the traditional funding sources. Um it allows us to be um responsive and timely in the services that we're providing to our community. And it allows for the nuances and the needs in our community in workforce development.
Over twenty twenty-six, what happens then?
These could go away.
That's what's my, okay, that's what I wanted to know. So if the funding goes away, do the positions go away?
Yes, all of our positions at BERC are grant contingent.
Okay.
We only, so if you look at our um color chart on our org chart, my position, um our fiscal manager, and there's an office associate position that are in sort of the tan colors. Those are the only three um county positions. And then um the business services consultant manager is ten percent of his money comes through local government money.
The um federal funding, uh I didn't realize you were getting that, that's great. Um the oversight of that federal funding is the economic development team? I mean, how, how much is it and how is the oversight provided for the federal dollars?
The workforce board?
No, 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 the uh
Is supposed to oversee?
The ARPA. ARPA?
ARPA, it's two point four million dollars that have, has come into our local workforce board. It comes through the county, it is, um, a pass through, through Department of Labor. Even though it's not funded through Department of Labor.
Right.
So yesterday we, um, talked about standing up a finance committee under the local workforce board and so that will-
I left before that.
Yeah, you did, so that would be part of their responsibility to do that. There's going to be an executive committee, a finance committee, and then a youth program committee. So that will be part of their charge and part of their responsibilities. Um, as you know, we get monitored by Maryland Department of Commerce and, you know, the federal all the time for the WIIOA grant, as well as we will continue to, you know, respond to those monitoring requests from the state for the, the other grants as well. So there's definitely oversight and, and monitoring that's going on on a regular basis.
That two point four million, we didn't have that oversight, did we?
That went directly, those go directly to the workforce, that's in addition, remember last week when Debbie Standiford was here? Um, you know, we talked about the CRF money, which was, you know, eight, about eighteen million we got, then about the thirty-two million for, for, um, the FRF. But the county as a whole, including the transit grants, the airport grants, the workforce grants, uh, other citizen services related grants that went directly to these agencies, um, for very specific purposes, um, are, add up to, I think it was like seventy million dollars that we've gotten. I'm looking at Cory, and she's nodding her head, thank you. Um, about seventy million dollars in total that the county's gotten so far from federal funding in, in, um, in, so. So some of it was very, very targeted, um, and, and for very specific purposes, like workforce stuff, yeah.
And so we have to work, we have to, um, obligate our funds by December of twenty twenty-four, but we can expend them through
Twenty twenty-six.
June of twenty-six.
The, um, the, the organization design that the state provides you, I, I would expect has been there for a while. They don't change very often. Um, is it the right mix? Uh, is there other positions that you believe would be more advantageous to Carroll County from labor?
I think it's a good time to look at our agency.
Okay.
And, and look at possibly reclassification or what we need to administer funds. Um, it's very different than our WIIOA grant. We've been given a large amount of money with a large charge to go with it. And, um, we have to establish time and effort of our staff to each grant. So by spreading it over three grants, we dilute the grants. So, so in our due diligence to provide not only the best services we can, but to be good stewards of the, the funds, we need to really look at this.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think, and you, I agree that it's probably the right time. I think the last question I have is, what else do you need from us at this point?
Um, I appreciate the support you've given us so far. I mean, everybody is, I, I think we all feel the need to look at the workforce needs of our county. We want people back to work, we want to support our local businesses. And, um, I, I just thank you for all the support you've given us thus far and being open to changes we need to make to adapt to the services we need to provide.
Okay, well therein lies the challenge. Because at the four or five meetings I was at yesterday, the discussion is all about retaining workforce. And it's not happening. At all. I don't care how much money we pour into these programs, it's not happening. So while I think this is a great idea and it's wonderful on paper, somebody's got to come up with a way to stop the bleeding when it comes to workforce. It's in our faces, we've got over seventy positions just in the county. That's seven percent of our workforce, open. Fire and EMS can't retain. College can't retain. It's, it's crazy.
Look at the reason why.
Well, what is that reason? We all say that, Dick, and we all talk about how great these programs are, but yet there's no impact at this point. It's getting worse.
Yeah, and you made a-
So I think we really need to dive in, if now's a good time to look, like you say, at the organization or whatever, let's do that. Because we're, we're, we're losing the battle. We really are. And I, again, I applaud everything you do over there. As both of you know, I had a person that was, was loving the, the youth specialist thing and did a great job there. How many of those folks were retained? I would venture to say not many.
But some of these programs do work. I worked with Denise since two thousand in some programs and they were very successful.
Yeah, well, that, times are changing and we have to change with those times, so.
It is, and it's helping businesses adapt too and think outside of the box, think differently. What is the, the business culture? What is the culture, the climate that people are looking for and maybe adapt to that? Because it's not always money.
Right.
It, it, it's, and, um, I think when you're, you know, under fire and you just need to fill positions, it's really hard to look at climate change and culture change. But, um, that's really, I think, how to move forward. Um, and the county's a large employer that's going to have to do that as, as well, and we're not exempt from it.
It, it's not just here, it's regionally, it's, it's globally, that it's just, it's a huge problem.
And certainly Commissioner Wance, if any of the entities or businesses that you're talking to have specific questions or needs, you know, please let us know. We can follow up directly with them, um, you know, that is, that is very important. But I think you mentioned it yesterday, Commissioner Rossin, is that, you know, it takes people to make things work. And that's why we're here to ask for some of these other positions and changes. We're asking you to be flexible with us so that we can move the organization where we need, where we think we need it to be so that we can respond to these challenges. Cause you're right, it's not just here, it's statewide, it's nationally. Um, there's many challenges, there's a lot of moving pieces to it, you know, a lot of it is looking at the labor market, looking at compensation, looking at culture. You know, how can we help businesses do that? And that is one of the things that our business consultant does is say, okay, where are you with compensation and, you know, some of these things? And he participates in the local, you know, hu- human resources, um, committee that's here in Carroll County, uh, SHRM. And so, you know, we're in touch with, you know, those hiring managers and, you know, try to educate, you know, the businesses. Okay, where do you need to be in this marketplace right now?
What I shared, you know, yesterday, um, and I tried to, you know, share yesterday, and I think it was received that, um, there are changes. We've got to recognize, I, I didn't mention SHRM, it's a great organization. Uh, there are others, you know, um, on the Governor's Workforce Development Board, it is a very diverse board and is going to continue to be diverse to look at these challenges. You know, there's no easy answer, I wish there was, um, you know, and you're, you're hitting it, you know, nail on the head. Compensation, money, you know, benefits, location, work hours, three days of work, five days a week, seven days a week. Nobody has the answer, it ain't that everybody's going to be, you know, teleworking, you know, they're going to come back.
That's not the answer either.
You know, that's definitely not the answer. So to, to sit back and say, well, this is it, no, it's, okay, let's figure it out. And, and if you, and that's why I brought this up, was if you believe your organization is set at this point to answer these challenging questions, that's great. If not, let's figure out a better design. I think I, I definitely applaud the, uh, uh, Workforce Development Board. I, I saw a lot of enthusiasm, um, and no backbenchers, and that's a good thing. You know, that's what you need, that's what we need in our community. So thi- this is a start, you know, uh, and yeah, I absolutely agree with what you're saying. Um, it, it's difficult, cybersecurity jobs, there's probably ten thousand vacancies in the state.
And over top of, if, uh, can I, uh, thank you. And over top of all this, I think we're faced with inflation as a major factor in how people look at their jobs. They're losing their consumption power to exist in employment. You're looking at other sectors of employment that are accelerating their wages faster and they want to retrain, retool, shift over. So that's constantly hanging over us, things aren't as stable as they were financially, things are more fluid and it's impacting all of us.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, with that, I'd like to move, Board of Commissioners, accept the changes in additions to the Carroll County Workforce Development Positions as presented.
Second.
I got a motion, got a second, any discussion on this? Seeing here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you ladies.
Thank you, Commissioner, free time.
You guys put a lot of work in this, thank you.
Come up with a plan to change the generation thinking right now. That's what you gotta do. When you get that, come back, okay?
I know, yeah, we'll solve it, we'll be out of here.
Maybe change the older generations.
We need psychiatrists.
Okay, let's talk about electrical repairs and improvements to the Freedom District Water Treatment Plant.
Didn't we do these ones?
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with Bureau of Utilities requests your approval to award a contract for the electrical repairs and improvements at the Freedom District Water Treatment Plant to Eastern Sales and Engineering Company in the amount of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars and twenty, twenty cents. This award will be made via competitively bid term contract. The bid amount is within the adopted budget and no additional funds will be necessary.
Good morning, gentlemen. As per the briefing paper, the Freedom Water Plant, uh, is, uh, consists of two separate parts. The, uh, new facility that was completed in two thousand nine, that's where the, the drinking water is actually processed from, from, from the lake into the finished, uh, product. The second part of the plant is, is, is the old facility that was originally built in, in the late nineteen sixties and upgraded in nineteen eighty-one. The, the old plants, uh, several of the old plant's buildings are still used to, to, to process the affluent water from the new facilities water treatment operation. It, it also houses one chemical treatment process and it serves as the workshop for the new plant. Uh, in recent weeks, plant staff has had to react to a significant issue with aged wiring and conduit as part of the old plant's, uh, footprint. Interim repairs haven't been made at this time. Uh, thi- this item is for the permanent work and includes the installation of two hundred feet of, of new three-inch diameter conduit, clearing and reusing two and a half inch conduit, entrenching in certain areas, and the installation of three runs of four, four hundred and eighty volt, three-phase copper feeds and a copper grounding wire, uh, copper grounding line. These improvements will, will allow the facility to meet all current code requirements and will allow the plant to, to continue to function in a, a reliable and efficient manner. Any questions?
So the electrical tape's not working, you need to do something more, is that what you're saying?
Need to wire nuts.
Okay, I'll move Board of Commissioners, award a contract for electrical repairs and improvements at the Freedom District Water Treatment Plant to Eastern Sales Engineering Company in the amount of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second, any discussion on this, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, one for one. Now let's talk about purchase of replacement grinder for the Sykesville Pumping Station.
Yummy.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with Bureau of Utilities requests your approval to award a contract for the purchase of a replacement grinder for the Sykesville Pumping Station to JWC Environmental in the amount of thirty-one thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-five cents. This award will be made via single source vendor, the budget is within the adopted budget and no additional funds will be necessary.
The, 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 the existing grinder at the Sykesville Pump Station was purchased and installed in two thousand and three and is out of service and beyond repair at this time. It, it has been removed from the pumping station. As per the photograph that shows on, on your screen, the, the grinder is, is this device right here. And its main purpose i- is to pulverize the, the waste stream into a fine slurry a- as, as, as the sewer, uh, comes into play. The, the, the right photograph shows an, an above view of the grinder actually installed. The sewage waste flow in this picture comes in from the bottom of, of, of the screen. It goes directly into the grinding wheels and, and pulverizes the, the wastewater stream. And the, um, the primary, uh, benefit for this process is it eases the wear and tear on, on the pumps and extends their overall service life. And the, the clogging, uh, uh, aspect i- is also curtailed quite a bit. This item is only for the purchase of the grinder, Bureau of Staff will, will actually do the installation work itself. This grinder model has a, an expected service life of twelve to fifteen years. It is the same model as the one that, that, that was taken out and matches several others in use at, at throughout our collection of pumping stations. And as you are aware, there are plans to upgrade or, or replace the Sykesville Pump Station over the next several years. And we, we, we will transition this new grinder into that facility.
I see some welding in there.
There is some welding in there.
You gonna take a tour and oversee this?
Uh, and have lunch afterwards.
Undersee it, is what you would do here. Wow. Have they improved these grinders, Andy, to the, you know, we always hear, uh, in another community I'm familiar with, you know, you, you, don't put this down the,
Oh, yeah?
Down the pipes, you know, please don't, are, are they, are we to the point where these grinders are taking care of that now? And I'm glad I ate breakfast before this conversation, so anyway.
If, if the flow reaches the grinder, the, the grinder will, will, will pulverize it. The, the issue with flushing certain items in your, in your household is the, the small lateral line that goes from the house to the main is where the tree roots come in and clog the course. So that, that's, that's the main issue.
Everything has limits.
Yeah, well, that, that message needs to keep going out there, because that, you know, we-
That's where all the snakes, just snaking the pipes and stuff come in because they're, they're, um, horizontal, so.
Okay, well.
Now, when I, uh, ran for meat, I had, uh, American Water was my contracted, uh, water facility. And I remember going out there and seeing these things. Okay. Okay, I'll move the Board of Commissioners, award contract for the purchase of a replacement grinder for the Sykesville Pumping Station to JWC Environment, Environmental in the amount of thirty-one thousand, two hundred seventy-three dollars, sixty-five cents.
Second.
I got a motion, got a second, any discussion on this grinder? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Absolutely, you're welcome. Now let's talk about approval of a change order request on contract twenty tech R, tech one, twenty twenty hot mix asphalt paving.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So you have heard, uh, Chris and I up here and others many times, um, talking about using the right method at the right time. And that is why we're here before you today with this change order. We have an opportunity to change our practices a bit, and, uh, Chris, if you could get into exactly what we're planning.
Thank you. As part of our pavement evaluation process, it was recommended that the county utilize another pavement rehabilitation strategy, mill and patch only. Strategy's not new to us, as we mill and patch base course routinely and then overlay roadways. Uh, where this project is different is we're only going to be milling and patching the failed areas on fifteen roadways and not immediately coming back and overlaying the entire roadway, just the area that we patched. Um, some of the patching may require some subgrade to be removed and replaced also. Um, the roadways we've identified for this project have a low percentage of patching compared to the overall square footage of the pavement, making them ideal candidates for just the patching method. Um, patching will, um, the failed areas will prevent them from continuing to grow. Increasing, that would increase the future repair costs and then will also provide a better rideability for our motorists. After these are patched, then we'll determine whether or not they're, um, appropriate candidates for other preservation strategies such as smooth seal, chip seal, micro surface or, or a thin overlay. In some cases, the patching may be sufficient, um, to get the roadways along. Um, we've identified a diverse sampling of roadways to evaluate this. Um, and we continue to evaluate all our repair strategies, as Doug mentioned, to achieve the right strategy at the right time. The funding we're planning to use is savings within our twenty R one, twenty twenty hot mix asphalt paving project. CJ Miller of Hampstead has agreed to perform this work as a change order to the existing project, the amount of seven hundred twenty-two thousand, four hundred eight dollars and zero cents. And they anticipate they're ready to start this work as soon as the weather is suitable.
Okay.
I think this is a great idea. Also, I'm bringing your attention, I'm sure Commissioner Wance has heard it too, with the rehardening of the gravel roads, we're having failed spots. Will we develop a potential program similar to this to address those needs or? Somewhere in the future, if I can be briefed or Commissioner Wance, so we can listen and, or give something back to our constituents or appease them?
Yeah, we absolutely will, with regard to our surface hardening of the gravel roads, you know, when we came in, uh, to look at that, we realized at that point that whenever you do that, everything requires a certain amount of maintenance. But I think if you look overall, uh, we have heard from our customers that they appreciate the reduction in dust. Uh, in general, it keeps things exactly where we were told. But we were under no misconceptions that we would go through a winter time and not have to deal with a pot, just like a pothole in a regular blacktop road. Um, so we absolutely are developing str- Um, so we absolutely are developing strategies with our roads team who will primarily handle that to, to make sure that we go back on those roads.
I'm looking forward to briefing on that maybe during a site visit week, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, with that, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the change order to the existing purchase order with CJ Miller, Inc. in the amount of seven hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred eight dollars.
Second. Okay, I got a motion, got a second, I got a good haircut by Mr. Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Look, look at that haircut.
I, I wish I could grow hair, but I seem follicle challenged. My forehead continues to grow.
Be very careful here.
I didn't say nothing about you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
I like, I like to shine. Come on up, Mr. Daggett. Let's talk about twenty-two land preservation park and recreation plan update.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
First of all, I need to say I'm very impressed that you got through that whole thing, land preservation park and recreation plan. We're constantly referring to it as LPRP, LPPRP. And, uh, it is quite an effort to go through this and, and update it. But I want to give the Board an update on where we are in this process and where we'll be going next. Uh, as you all know, every year we get program open space funding from the state of Maryland. That is one of the major sources of funding for our capital budget. Uh, can be used for park, parkland acquisition or development. In order to get POS funding, we have to complete a land preservation park and recreation plan every five years. So we are now in that cycle of updating the plan. The last one was done in twenty seventeen. Uh, virtually everything that's in this plan has appeared someplace else previously, whether it's a county master plan, whether it's capital budgets for the county, for the towns. Uh, a lot of this is collecting that information and packaging it in a format that the state can review and then they will also get this from every county in Maryland. They incorporate this into their state, uh, land preservation park and recreation plan. And they're on a slightly different schedule from us. I believe it's two or three years ahead. They'll be working on their next update. There's three main components to the plan, recreation and parks. There's a natural resource component and an ag preservation component. So a lot of what we have done is update the figures from previous reports. Uh, in the case of parks, we've had some new park acquisitions, uh, two acre property on Hapss Mill Road and a hundred and forty-five acre property north of Tony Town. We've had some new parks that have been developed and opened, so we've updated our inventory to reflect that. And we've gotten a lot of assistance from the Department of Planning and the Department of Land Resource Management. So I want to make sure that they are recognized. We really appreciate their support. Uh, in particular Sandy Baber, who was a godsend helping with the maps. Uh, some of the mapping for this, when you're looking at radius around different park sites, this is way beyond what our staff is capable of doing. We don't have the equipment or the expertise. Sandy was great to work with on that. Uh, Will Brozi in our office worked on the inventory and did a great job with that. Uh, Brenda Denny helped with the natural resource information and JP Smith with the ag preservation, so we're very grateful to all. Uh, we will have a summary of the goals included in this plan, what efforts we've made to achieve those goals for the county, how they are consistent with the state goals and showing progress on what's been done since the last plan. One of the things that's new this year is that, uh, the state has asked us to have the municipalities more involved in the process. So we've done some things differently this year. We've included all of the town CIPs as they relate to parks. That is included in the plan, uh, as well as how we work with them. As you all know, we take some of our program open space funds each year, allocate them for town projects. We also help fund the match that is required. Uh, we've also reached out to the town with a survey, uh, with a number of questions regarding park development. Do you have enough parkland? Are there areas where we can work together? And that was some valuable feedback and the results from that survey are also included in this report. Uh, some of the metrics, for many, many years, the state used one metric to see if you were meeting your land acquisition goal. And that was if you had thirty acres of parkland or park and recreation land per one thousand residents, you've met your goal. And no one at the state could remember where they first got that idea from. It was one of those things that gets institutionalized, was used for years. Uh, they then realized that it was a flawed metric because for Carroll County, if we had thirty acres of parkland or that much per thousand residents, but it was all located, say, in detour, we're not serving Eldersburg or Manchester or Westminster very well. So there is still a metric of how many total acres do you have, but now they have incorporated park equity and park proximity. How far do you have to travel to go to a park? Our neighborhoods that may have different demographics or income levels, are they treated well in terms of where the parks are located? So that is a part of this report as well. Uh, as far as the proximity goes, over ninety-nine percent of the residents within the county are within five miles of park and recreation land. That includes county parks, town parks and school facilities because we use them for recreation as well. The only area that is outside of that, it's approximately forty-five homes in Lineboro. So that tells, that's pretty specific. And that's where Sandy comes in with those maps. It was really helpful. But, uh, that's an impressive number and I think that along with our acreage, which is well over the thirty per thousand, we're at about forty-six acres per thousand. And then also the equity issue. Uh, the state has a park equity mapper program that you can use and we pulled up a score for the entire county. For Carroll County, we have the highest equity score in the state of Maryland. So every area, even when you get into the subgroups and the smaller areas within the county, everything scores very highly. So I think a combination of those factors, the total acreage, the equity and the proximity suggests that we continue to, to meet our acreage goal and we have done that since two thousand and six. Why is that important? Because if we have not met our acreage goal, then the POS money that we get from the state, fifty percent would have to be used for land acquisition and fifty percent would go into park development. As it stands now, we're able to use seventy-five percent for development. And there's still a twenty-five percent requirement every year to go towards land acquisition.
Just by accident or is it your leadership?
Good luck. Let's, let's go with that.
Good luck.
And, and frankly, your decisions to help purchase some property in some key areas, the Hapss Mill property and the Tony Town property that were recently purchased, that contributes to this. So I appreciate your support then and the support of passports that have really put us in this place.
Well, we can't make those decisions collectively unless you're out there collecting that information and bringing it to us, so thank you and your staff.
Thank you. I'll be driving around Lineboro later looking for, for sales signs. Uh, we're going to be putting this draft report on the website. It'll be up on our webpage around noon today. So public will have an opportunity to review it and to take a look at it, to have further comment. We got a lot of comments from them on a couple of needs assessment surveys that we had. We had listening sessions held in two different parks. Uh, we also had it available and open for comment online for about a month last year. So we received input from more than two thousand people. That was considered as a part of the development of this plan. Uh, we've submitted the draft to DNR this week. They will take somewhere between thirty and forty-five days, uh, to comment on it. They'll get it back to us probably around the end of March. And then we have between then and July first to submit a final version to the state for their approval. So we're on track to get this done and, excuse me, as I said, it's a lot of work and it's not the most exciting work. It's not the most exciting document to read, but, uh, it is necessary. Obviously, we need to continue the ability to use program open space funds. And the last thing I'd like to share before I open up the questions, a lot of the larger counties, when they undertake this effort, they're hiring a consultant to do this. And they will end up with several hundred pages in this report. Our report was about a hundred and, hundred and one pages. It's all done within house staff. It is actually an eligible use of program open space funding to hire a consultant to do a report. Uh, personally, I have an issue with that with the limited POS funding that we get. I would much rather see it used to buy parkland or build a park than to pay for a report. So we worked through it and again, with the help of the other agencies, uh, I think it's a good report and it'll be out there today for public viewing.
I'm sure it'll be more exciting to read than our CIP budget.
Well, we have a page in there, including the CIP, and how do we get there and, you know, what's the thought process behind it?
Have you used, um, Community College or, uh, McDaniel?
We have not in the past.
Yeah.
Uh, this year and the previous report in twenty seventeen were the first years when DNR took the lead on it at the state level, which then resulted in, in recreation parks taking the lead on it locally. Previously, planning had, uh, been the driving force behind it.
Okay. Well, I, we have you in front of us. I know that there's potentially three sites for kayak and Union Bridge, Hapss Mill and one forty-eight Monocacy. Eventually, I want to be briefed on where we're at on that, like construction, open them up. And also, so this is my last year, hopefully I can do a kayak launch with you at Double Pipe Creek since COVID had kept postponing it. But I really love for us to potentially get together a group of people, do a little bit of publicity and give some public awareness that that ramp is there because it seems like it's underutilized and needs a little bit of publicity. So if you want to get a group of people from wrecking parks together and launch, I'd be more than happy to go out there and do it with you.
That's a beautiful stretch.
Ed Singer mentioned this to me. He said he really wanted to do this and I'd love to get out there with him.
Ed and I had talked about that in the past, so I'll have to reach out to him.
And in the spring, the water's a little higher. I know that during the summer it dries up and drops, so the opportune time would most likely be this spring, at least, at least when the weather gets warm.
Yes, when it's a little warmer and, and now's not the best time to go just with temperatures and water temperature.
Thank you.
Hey, any, any questions?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
And I have a second kayak if any of my colleagues want to borrow.
Okay, let's talk about psychological testing.
Commissioner.
Fire EMS, speak to Mr. Robinson.
Mike and we have a public commenter first.
Okay, well, they can come up.
Oh, one and then their backs too. Alright, that's up to you.
Okay. Gentlemen, you can, you can look behind you and see the public commenter.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike, while you, we have a public comment.
So my, my name's, uh, Michael Carrollink. I'm president of the Carroll County Professional Firefighters and Paramedics. Uh, it's great to see Commissioner Wance, uh, a week after a late meeting last night and all that.
That I slipped out of, by the way, but that isn't.
Lucky you. A lot of good conversation, but that was, that was a long one. Uh, I, I don't know how the director got back down here in a timely fashion this morning, but, um, you know, I just wanted to come in and say real quick, it's, it's the, I guess, the, the positivity in us moving towards the hiring process in earnest. Uh, you know, with this, with, you know, what he, the director's bringing to you this morning and otherwise, you know, us pro- our progress towards the transition uh, of employment, moving towards fire EMS, uh, Department of Fire EMS is obviously important to us operationally and to employees. Of being able to, I really support our families, be, be able to continue to serve Carroll County. I guess just the, the one thing that I would continue to urge and, and do so publicly is as we move towards this, uh, the hiring process is that the Commissioners, um, maintain a commitment to the people that have been serving you in, as career staff already. You know, is it keeping the back of your minds, I guess, or even the forefront of your minds for, for that matter, um, prioritizing that commitment to the people that have been serving you for so long and enduring so much. I mean, whether it's the surge or all the other things that we've experienced so far this, through this, uh, you know, I, I think the worst case scenario would be arbitrarily disqualifying someone who's been a dedicated servant in this county for, for years and whatever timeframe before. I mean, we, we do have career staff that have been serving this county for, for twenty-plus years. Um, that's, that's really substantial and they've endured a lot and, uh, we hope to see their faces, you know, continue to serve Carroll County. Um, so it's just, I just wanted, like you said, the voice, our, our pleasure with seeing this move forward and, and getting closer to that hiring process and getting this transition underway. And if I just have the latitude real quick to just say something about the next item real quick while I'm here. Uh, we stand in firm, firm support of the new, uh, new vehicle. Uh, Director Robinson has done a great job and, uh, we don't want to lose him to the Jeep, so, uh, we look forward to that as well, so, alright, that's all I got. Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. I think, okay. Now let's go back to the psychological testing services. Sometimes I feel like we need it all. Okay, go ahead.
The Office of Procurement in Cooperation with the Department of Fire and EMS requests your approval to award a term contract to Atlantic Aki Psych, Inc. to provide psychological testing for employment candidates for fire and EMS. The testing will, will be provided at a cost of four hundred dollars for each evaluation. The Department of Fire and EMS estimating up to one hundred candidates per year will reach the psychological testing stage of the hiring process for an estimated total amount of forty thousand dollars. The contract will be issued through a Delaware State contract that was competitively bid and the amount is within the adopted budget and no additional funds will be needed.
And just to provide a little clarification with this, um, as a standard practice, um, we intend to emulate the process of some of the other jurisdictions in the region, which includes psychological testing. The particular, uh, contract we're, uh, going to be using, um, we did an interview of that individual. Uh, he provided us with samples, which is a fairly reliable predictor of employee success. It looks at, uh, areas of past history. It looks at, um, the ability, um, to perform under duress and it's probably similar, um, to what the Commissioner Ross teams used to in the military, the same type of things. It does some profiling and it has a high degree of accuracy in, uh, determining success. Uh, so this will be part of a multifaceted process that will ultimately have about eight steps to it. In anticipation of hiring, uh, for the next fiscal year, we want to get these things in place so we can start as soon as we're able to because it's going to be a multi-month process and we're already, um, you know, one year behind essentially in getting the people on board.
Will they be retained for, um, you know, other activities, psychological activities and assessments, you know, um, after events occur?
Yes, there, there are options in here that we would probably have to come back for, but they do things such as fitness for duty and other related products that they offer, um, that would be consistent to a public safety person.
But like PTSD and other
Yes, yes.
Um, have you talked with, um, the sheriff and the tools he uses?
Yes, and, um, we looked at the sheriff's person. We did do some follow-up with that, but, uh, basically this person has the most experience in the region with fire and EMS.
People that we've hired already before you came, did they get through this process as well?
No, but the, the cur- the current employees are actually employees of the respective volunteer department. So, uh, it would be, I'm not familiar with what each department was doing, um, beyond probably a basic background check. We want to make sure the people are vetted.
Right. Now, we're not going to backwards.
No, no.
You know.
Uh, well, what will, what will happen, uh, there are people that are current employees of the volunteer companies because they're not county employees.
Right.
They would go through this process.
Okay.
To bring them on board.
I mean, it's a good opportunity. It's a good opportunity for them as well.
Yes.
You know?
Yes.
The, you know, employees got to recognize the value of this. It's not right or wrong. It's understanding. You know, their self-awareness.
Right, and, and because we're going to be hiring people that are, they're, they're not specifically incumbents, but they're experienced, some of them for decades, they may have underlying issues that, um, may be a challenge to employment with us. So we want to make sure that we've looked at all those elements and, uh, there's, as I said, there's a lot of reliability with this firm. He provided us with samples and what they're actually, uh, measuring.
Commissioner Wance, do you have any thoughts and ideas on this one or is it?
No, I think it's, it's spot on and, and it's the best direction and it's a great step in getting us to where we need to be.
Did you go through this?
Well done. I'll refrain from answering that question.
When do you anticipate your first hires?
Well, depending on, and, and as you know, I'm going to be meeting with you all in several weeks, um, depending what's decided and what happens in the budget, um, we plan to advertise and begin the process prior to whatever is approved. We know for certain that we will be hiring people, so, uh, in speaking with the county administrator, um, we can advertise and start the process, so that was the, the purpose of this. I hope to, we've been working on the job specs and the classifications with HR on an ongoing basis, so I would hope to advertise, um, no later than late April, beginning of May. And the, the unpredictable part of this is we have no idea what the response will be to our advertisement. It could be a handful of people, could be as many as a thousand people, uh, because there's a lot of job boards and could be as many as a thousand people, um, because there's a lot of job boards and related things nationally that this will be advertised, and, and I think it'll be appealing to a lot of people.
Great.
And there's a lot of people that are going to come into play here, Mike, when it comes to steps prior to the psychological testing. You're going to have to have proctors for written and, and
Correct.
physical ability, and so
Right, all those things.
We're setting up this whole plan here.
Yes, and all those other areas will come before this because of the cost associated with this. Uh, this will actually occur after the occupational, um, physical.
Director Robinson, I want to compliment you on establishing such a great working relationship with our sheriff's department. You did a very good job. I hear good things about you.
Oh, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll move the Board of Commissioners to award term contract to Atlantic Psych, uh, Aki Psych Incorporated to provide psychological testing for an estimated amount of $40,000 a year.
Second.
I got a motion, second. Anything to be discussed? Seeing here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay, now let's talk about, uh, an SUV, a 2022 Ford Interceptor SUV.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Fleet Management Warehouse Operations requests your approval to award the purchase of one 2022 Ford Explorer Interceptor SUV from Apple Ford in the amount of $55,141. The purchase is being made through a mail-in state contract that was competitively bid, and the amount is within the adopted budget, and no additional funds will be needed.
Alright, commissioners, uh, as we discussed last week, this is our last opportunity to buy these vehicles. This one being for Director Robinson and the Department of Fire and EMS. Uh, the price that Eli stated, uh, includes the vehicle along with all the upfitting necessary, um, uh, which consists of the storage compartments, lights, sirens, everything. Um, again, these vehicles, uh, still have a six-to-eight month delay, uh, so with your approval today, we would expect it sometime mid to late summer.
Okay.
So you got the Jeep till August. Uh, my, my only question, I guess, uh, is, is the same one I asked last week when we were ordering for the sheriff's department. Uh, should we not be ordering a few more of these? Because I know in anticipation of, 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 uh, you know, a plan that I've seen and that we'll see here eventually, that puts that off a little bit. We, we got to have vehicles to put people in, so.
We're going to be, um, hiring the EMS officer and the Training, Health and Safety Officer hopefully by the end of April, and both of those people will ultimately, as part of their duties, they will require vehicles. Uh, there's no money currently, so I didn't put in for that, but we are developing a six-year vehicle plan, and so my vehicle will be the template for the subsequent administrative people that are hired for their vehicles. The one thing is, is that the EMS person, that vehicle will double as a backup, uh, EMS supervisor vehicle. So when our shift commander comes on, we've got to put him down for hours on end to administer discipline or whatever, my EMS officer will have a vehicle that'll be equipped to respond. So ultimately, we're going to buy two more similar vehicles, and, uh, we, uh, will have that need, and it'll be an almost immediate need.
Which is why I'm asking the question. Because I know it's not a line item on our budget right now, but because of the challenges we're seeing
Yep.
in the industry, I just don't want to have somebody riding around in something that's not efficient enough for what these jobs require. So I'm here today to say, why not look ahead and order three of these instead of one, if that's what we need today? And if that's what you're anticipating today.
Absolutely.
I, because of the, uh, again, because of the, the way in which the length of time it's taking to get these things, uh, I, I'm here to, to entertain, uh, the notion that, that we should find an additional, whatever, 110 or 100, whatever it is, to get three of these now.
Did I just hear Director Zaleski fall out of his chair?
What, what are your thoughts? You're, you're about to say something.
Uh, well, as Director Robinson said, we are working within our budget. Um, if you would like us to do something like that, then we understand, but there are options to buy vehicles off lots. Uh, the only thing is if they're available at the time. Apple Ford of Columbia, who we're ordering this vehicle from, we can buy stuff off of a contract if they have it on a lot. But, yeah, with, with the shortages of the vehicles, that's just, it's something, if you want to take a chance on.
It's a crazy market right now.
The shortage is expected to run through the end of '22.
Yeah, and that's going to keep pushing everything back.
Yeah, exactly, but I just got notice about a while ago that this chip shortage and all the other issues, or supply shortages are supposed to not, it'd be the end of '22 before we see a clear.
Mike, your, your anticipation is that you, you will be requesting these vehicles in the budget?
Correct. And the, the, the need for these vehicles will be as of, um, let's just say, May of this year, 2022. So we wouldn't be able to order them until the next FY 20, uh, '24 budget, so it'd be over a year away, and we'll have to.
You know, I, I apologize. I, I agree with you. I mean, safety, security, quality of life.
I, I think
Those are three pillars.
I, I think we should, I, clearly, we have some monies available. I don't know how the, the, all that works, but, uh,
You can authorize the purchase until after we've transferred the money, so we, um, really would need to have, I would suggest we have a, um, I, I mean, we have to, you know, to do this correctly, open meetings and everything wise, that we put it as an agenda item, we transfer the money, you know, from reserve contingencies or wherever you want to take it from, and then, um, and then, and then authorize the purchase.
Is that going to, is that going to mess you up?
The absolute latest deadline for the fours is the 23rd, so I believe that's next Wednesday.
Okay, so I understand the open meeting stuff. I get all that. I'm a big, you know how I am with that.
Well, and more, oh, not more importantly, the budget.
Well, I understand that too.
Um.
But I'm, I, 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 just, we got to do something.
No, I agree. The, the topic is to purchase the vehicle, so I don't think, you know, I, I, I mean, it is a stretch if we're going from one to three, but it's still within the topic of purchasing a vehicle, so I think we can cover that. What do you think, Ted? And, and your, your shade of red is there, but as long as it doesn't turn blue, we're okay. Go ahead.
Yes, the public is, if interested public would be tuning in to hear about the purchase of, uh, vehicles, emergency, for the emergency, fire, emergency medical.
So therefore, going from one to three is not that big of a stretch in the open meetings at this point, I think.
It's hard to imagine someone saying, oh, my gosh, I would, I would have tuned in if, if I'd known it was three, right.
But now what we need is, um, budget to come in here
That, yes.
To
Trying to get Ted.
Work us
Or somebody.
Through the process of transferring the budget dollars and then executing them.
My, my guess is he is not in the building. Let me, let me see if I can literally, okay, thanks. Get Deb or Ted and say, thanks.
Hey Doug, hey Doug, run. Yeah, I just think, and I hate to, I hate to put a, I hate to put a, you know, put a little complication in this, but, and I wouldn't do this ordinarily, but every day and every time you guys have been in here, it's the same old story. Well, we're six, eight months out. Well, if that's the case, I think this is extenuating circumstances here because we are developing our new fire and EMS department, and we need two more.
Yep.
And we can't wait till May to do it because then that means we won't get them till December.
Who are you trying to convince? You got us? You had us?
Stop selling? Okay, I'm waiting on the
We're just waiting on whether we can do it process-wise.
Okay, I'm going to stop selling. I am? You're not nodding off every day, are you, Weaver?
I'm trying to, and you keep interrupting me.
I will state that Mr. Burke turns blue. Nobody's following you. Give you mouth to mouth.
Okay. Is somebody going to be coming in?
There should be someone, yes. Un- unfortunately, Ted is doing a, a chamber luncheon talk today, so I'm assuming he is gone, but someone else in the budget office can answer the questions.
Okay.
Okay, administratively, um, and we're just going to stand by for this, but administratively, if we can look at the, some of your closed minutes from, uh, February 10th.
Yeah, I have a
Dealing with, uh, land acquisition.
I have a correction on that.
Okay, hold on.
Well, never mind.
Nicely done, Doug.
Briefly, three vehicles instead of one?
Yes.
Yes.
And where the funding would come from?
Yes.
Okay, um, we have 1.5 million, is this on?
It is.
Okay, we have 1.5 million of net new funding in the fire, uh, line that the transition didn't start. So we have funding.
Um, we would just need to, normally what we do is we, uh, pay for it out of fleet, but at the end of the year, those charges end up going into the, to the individual line items anyway. So what we could do is have fleet purchase them and then just charge it to the fire line, and then we wouldn't even need a transfer. Okay?
Much easier. So your motion is to?
My motion is to purchase three 2022 Ford Explorer Interceptor SUVs from Apple Ford in the appropriate amount, uh, whatever that is. I, I'm not that good with the math, uh, so you guys do the math, so. Did you already do it, Doug, or what?
One, one of them will come out of this and two will come out of fleet, or how's it going to work?
Right, well, so, so the only thing I want to be clear, uh, Director Robinson has said that one of these is going to be configured a bit differently. So that's why your, your motion is great because it may cost more, well, it will cost more for cabinetry configuration for an ALS vehicle
Right.
than a supervisor vehicle.
Right, so I, I'll leave that
Perfect.
open with, with no specific price tag on it, but I'll leave the motion open just of the one plus the two.
And does that cover y'all? You're good?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that motion. And I appreciate it. I appreciate the, uh, forward thinking of this, and like I said, safety, security, quality of life. We're in it. Any further discussion? Good job, Mike. Seeing here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Well, I sincerely appreciate, uh, the commissioners' cooperation and
You're doing it.
unexpected, and, uh, thank you very much for understanding what our position is and our direction.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for what you've done so far.
Director, you get a chance, treat Sheriff to lunch sometime. He's a fan of you.
Okay, as I was sharing, uh, thank you, Mr. Carolinko as well, coming in. Um, looking at closed minutes from February 10th, uh, on land acquisition. Commissioner Weaver, you had a
I, on the, uh, page where the minutes are there, uh, the board directed staff to prepare. I can't, I'm not going to read it. But I, I didn't think there was a set number in there. They, they would come back with, uh, come back with the number. If they go with that number, you just wasted your time, I think, so. I thought it was to be flexible or come back with a
I, I, my understanding is that was the number we had discussed.
I think it was, to see what the response would be.
Yes.
Based on different
But the response was to see where, where they could come together, I thought. It was just going to be at that set number?
Yeah.
Set number plus.
Yeah.
With, with the stipulations underneath it.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from closed on, uh, February 10th.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. You good there?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, alls we're doing is approving what was said.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Whether we agree with what was said is a different story.
I, I, it's not the way I intended they were written.
Yeah.
I misinterpreted what
Okay.
was on that then.
Um, uh, open, well, what's your name? Chris, do we have any, uh, callers?
No callers.
Okay, thank you. Anything for open admin at this time? Okay.
You'll cover it in agenda items, so.
Okay.
I'll speak then.
Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, for February 21st. The office is closed on Monday. Don't get near me. I don't care. Office is closed on Monday in observance of President's Day at 6:30 PM. Commissioner Weaver will have at least three in the town hall, but hopefully more than that, in attendance to town hall in Carroll High School. Yeah.
That's nicely done.
But I may attend, I don't know. Uh, Tuesday, February 22nd is the State of the County, um, address, and as was shared, now it will be attended by, at the Carroll Art Center, Commissioner Frazier, myself, Wance, and Weaver. On Wednesday, February 23rd, is Mako Subcommittee along with Legislative Committee. Commissioner Wance and Frazier will be in attendance. And then that afternoon, in the Reagan Room, which is room 003, we will be doing a joint Board of Education, uh, meeting with, with us, the Board of Commissioners, um, and that starts at 4:00 PM. On Thursday, currently, we are scheduled, uh, to have a closed and open session. That may not occur, uh, due to looking at the items, and we may be able to get away with not having open session on Thursday.
Right, the, um, the, the, uh, transportation plan does not need the public hearing, um, so that item is definitely going away, and, um, Linda can move the consolidated transportation plan to the following week, and, um, no one has no one has any, um
So it's my recommendation we do not have open session on Thursday. We have, uh, full agenda on Tuesday, and then a joint meeting on Wednesday.
Are we going to have a closed session on Thursday?
There's no need for closed.
No, okay, because you said open.
I, I appreciate it. No, no close, no open on Thursday. Are we good with that?
I'm good with that, yeah.
Okay, um, let's see, Friday, we got nothing. Saturday, we got nothing, and I'm so looking forward to February 27th where I will provide the podcast on
Commissioner, if I may, before we go on to, uh, the next week, for the joint meeting, um, it was last, when we had it originally scheduled in early January, I guess it was, there were several agenda items, um, that the board wanted. Um, the Board of Education has, has provided, you know, a lot of that, um, to you in writing, and, um, and so a lot of those things probably are no longer necessary. Um, I asked, um, if anyone had any agenda items, and I haven't heard anything um, so far, so are there any particular agenda items you want? We had had, um, previously, um, partnership projects between Career and Tech and CMC and the Board of Education, future capital renovations, uh, budget stuff, um, BOA efforts with other county entities, um, superintendent search, student enrollment figures, um, staffing update, and the South Carroll Redistricting Committee. That was what was on the agenda previously.
They need to present their partial, their budget as they presented it. I think they need an explanation. They want to discuss
I'm sure they want the
budget items with us.
The, um, South, it's unfortunate that they're calling it South Carroll Redistricting as opposed to Carroll County School Redistricting. They've had two meetings to date. I think they're having a third on Tuesday.
Mm-hmm, just before.
Uh, just before, so we definitely would like to keep that as an agenda item because it's a, uh, a high-interest item, you know, at least I know in the southern part of the county.
I have some things, the things that we're asking that, that be communicated, they may have written to us in response, but I think the public might want to hear what they have to say about it.
Well, the
Just for us.
The two they're suggest, of the ones that are on here, the two that they're suggesting not to have are, is the first one, which is agreement on partnership projects between Career and Tech and the CMC, and, uh, the staffing, CCPS staffing. They're not having any staffing issues any longer, so.
Yeah, but I'd like them to say it.
I, I'd like to hear about that, because
Yeah, I would too. I find that
That's not my
Especially when it comes to nurses. I mean, you, you said that there were two more nurses that left, and
Yeah, I would like an update on their staffing.
Yeah.
See where they are, I mean.
Yeah.
So you want to leave it the same?
Yeah.
The agenda the same?
And I think that's a great idea, Dennis, because they've responded in writing for us, that's great. But, you know, we're there, and I'm sure the public, I, some public will be in.
Accountability, right?
Yes.
Right?
We have no closed on the 24th.
Transparency.
We do not.
Can you see that?
Closed and open is canceled on 24th.
Okay, alright, I'll just let them know.
Okay.
Thanks.
Now, after I've been interrupted, but not rudely, but just interrupt, on Monday, February 28th, we have nothing, on February twenty-eighth, we have nothing. On March first
March.
Wow. We have a long-awaited and looking forward to the Charles Carroll Community Center groundbreaking where all of us will be attending. And then
Let me just mention one thing because it remains a thorn in my side, social media. I mean, we put something positive on there that is, I think, tremendous. Of course I would. But it's not just tremendous for that community. It's tremendous for our county. We're adding another building that's going to be utilized by people from all over. And to get some of the negative crap that has been put on there about the ugliness of the building and, you know, why are you doing it on a Tuesday? And come on, people, can you just give it a rest? Give the negativity of social media a rest. We truly need that in these times. Just stop. Sorry.
No, I, often I say, why not just say thank you and
Yeah.
And move on. I am looking forward, and actually, it's a beautiful building, and looking forward to serving a community that, you know, you've been pushing to serve and continue to serve. So we have a dinner and discussion with Westminster at four thirty.
It's an early dinner.
On Tuesday, March first. Do we know where that's going to be?
No, and I think it's still tentative.
It's where?
We don't know and I think it's still tentative.
It's a place called Tentative. It's a, it's a neglect
It's a great restaurant.
Restaurant.
Right. We need to find out soon whether we're having that or not because
We've asked.
I have another obligation that I might have, that I can get out of, but I need to know. Let's, because someone else has to go if I'm not there.
Yeah, Kathy's already asked and we're waiting for their response.
Okay. On Wednesday, March second
Tell them to leave your house.
Yeah, we can still do it at his house. He just won't be there. Mako, Tax Subcommittee and Legislative Committee, Commissioner Wance and Frazier team will be down there on Thursday, March third. We will have closed and open session. Nothing at this time is scheduled, but we will fill that agenda on March third is what I would expect.
Yes.
We could not have another one there.
We will see. Friday, March fourth, Town Mall of Westminster is doing an anniversary ribbon cutting with Commissioner Frazier attending. I take it you'll be the keynote speaker?
What, what is that?
They ask me to attend and say I'm just speaking.
What is that exactly? Do you know?
It's like a rededication, I think.
It's, it's how many years? I can't remember.
Oh, okay, so they're just re-upping the energy of the mall.
Right.
Yes.
You're going to have to know how many years if you're keynote speaker.
I'm sure I get some information.
You opened it.
March fourth.
Oh.
That's good.
Mr. Burke, how's your end up?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Wance, with the weather warming up, is it a good time, maybe March third, to put on the new and improved possible noise ordinance? You want to discuss that briefly and introduce that and see if the Board is interested in proceeding to a public hearing?
Are you good with that, Commissioner Weaver?
Depends what it is.
What'd you say?
No, I would like that, yes. We need to get that. We'll talk about it, Dan. But I, yes, let's get it on, get it out of the way.
Who are you trying to convince? You got us?
It's just, just an agenda item. You're deciding whether you want to go ahead with it or not or keep the one you have.
Yeah, I think we need to, yeah.
And also the transportation plan that we're not doing a week before.
Yeah, that should be moved over, yeah.
It will be, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's easy to move transportation plan.
So now we got to have a session.
It's mobile. I hear it's mobile.
Now that I was rudely interrupted by Mr. Burke, I'll continue. Saturday, nothing. And Sunday, Commissioner Wance will provide his wisdom in the podcast. Is there anything that I missed?
If you're providing wisdom, I'll
Sure.
Wow.
Wow.
Yeah.
Anything I missed in sessions, Wanda?
No.
Okay, thank you so much. We're good. Now let's go into closed.
Motion to go into closed for
Sorry. No, we've got to say what for.
For, for land, is it land acquisition? Land acquisition.
Yes. Okay, now I need to, a motion to adjourn after
Wait a minute, we got to vote on that one.
We got to vote on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Pardon me, who seconded that?
Weaver.
Commissioner Weaver, thank you.
Now I need a motion to
Motion to adjourn after closed.
Second.
Done motion and got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
No.
Four one.